Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Fayetteville City Council meeting, special meeting in order. We welcome all of you who are joining us this evening for this very important topic and meeting. Those who join us virtually, we thank you for that. As with every meeting, we will begin with the prayer. And at this time, we'll ask that Councilman DJ here if he would give us invocation. If we could all please stand for the prayer immediately following, let's repeat the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads, please. Dear Lord Jesus, once again, we come to you first just saying thank you. Thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for a beautiful rest, and thank you for getting up. Lord, we also put before you this afternoon, this agenda package that we have. We're asking you, Lord, to help us, help our city and help cities all over the United States, Father, as we move forward to give some helping hands to curb and to lower crime throughout our cities. Dear Lord Jesus, we need your help desperately. So tonight, Father, this afternoon, as we move forward, let our hearts and ears be open. Let everyone's hearts and ears be open to the suggestions and the tools to help one another, Father. Let us all know that not one thing is going to bring down our crime or make the improvements that we may want regardless of what the entity may be, but it's a whole lot of things working together. And we ask you, Father, to help us to be able to move forward with that. Let us be in order. Let us be respectful of one another. And we ask all of these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Man, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilmember here. Welcome to Senator Applewhite. Good to see you. Any other elected officials, former elected officials in the audience, make sure that we don't overlook you. See, Mr. Montgomery, Chairman of the Democratic Party, I see you, former Chief Brayton, you we got your shirt. You didn't want your shirt back. All right. Chief looks too relaxed to be entertaining then, and tan. So we welcome all of you who are here. We thank you for this very special and important time in which we are having to have some serious conversation in our community on a topic that we all, I believe, had the same goals and outcomes desired, to have a safe community for all of us to enjoy peace and to enjoy our lives and to make sure the lives of our families are protected. And so the city council has called a special meeting. I asked that we meet specifically with that one topic in mind. And as we do it, because we understand the passion and we understand all of our, all of the importance to all of us, we'll ask that we maintain the decorum of the meeting. If conversations are taken in a direction that we agree or we disagree, we ask that we will keep our responses contained. We want everyone to enjoy the environment, to not feel intimidated if we don't agree to do it in an orderly, in any orderly fashion. But we will enforce the rule and the decorum of the room. So if there are any outbursts or anything that requires your removal, I will ask for that to be done. But we were able to have a spirited conversation that is, that maintains those things, and we look forward to that. And councilors, we move to the next item, which is approval of the agenda. We'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda. And I think that item 5.4 is obviously the one of most interest, and 5.5 was one of the other items for consideration. So Councilmember Thompson, I think he had recommended maybe switching those two items with approval?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right. So there's a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve the agenda with the exchange of 5.4 and 5.5 in that respective order, second by Councilmember here in discussion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. And Councilmember Banks McLaughlin is joining us by phone. All right. Councilmember, what's your pleasure on this item?
praying.
All right. Thank you. Who do we have that we're missing?
I'm great, sir. My machine is all.
Okay. Okay. All right. So motion carries nine oh. But we're, we're missing one here. Who didn't vote, madam?
We did.
Okay. All right. So he's rebooting. Okay. All right. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Moving to the next item. Council, there were a number of safety measures that I sent for your consideration for tonight's meeting. Certainly, our discussion is not limited to that. These were just some of the items that, along the course of the way, our discussions have been tailored toward how we can improve safety at some of our larger gatherings. The items read as follows: surveillance and technology discussion. 5.2 is augmented security presence with the expansion of private security for some of the larger events and venues, large gathering conversations, incentives for public cooperation like Crime Stoppers, and then, of course, the unattended minors discussion, curfew discussion. So as we move into that, we'll go to surveillance and technology. Is Chief Joyce here?
Chief.
Okay. Chief, how's it going?
Good, Harry.
Good. So Chief, during, during the meeting, last meeting when you gave the first quarter crime report, you were asked by Councilmember here and a number of others about our, our technology system. Can you speak to, one, the importance of what we have without disclosing anything that will compromise, you know, your advantages that you have, and the importance of how investing in this space helps you do your job better?
Absolutely, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. You know, when we began with our public safety cameras, of course, it started in incremental phases. And so as of today, right now, we have 200 public safety cameras throughout the city of Fayetteville, along with 60 LPRs or license plate readers throughout the city as well. They have truly been a force multiplier in assisting detectives, officers with their investigations, being able to solve crimes, being able to locate stolen vehicles, being able to locate missing persons, those persons who are endangered, you know, working with our partners as we receive that information. We also have a mobile camera trailer that we're able to deploy in events like Dogwood, you know, also working with some of our partners through, through homes here who, who now has some of that technology that they were able to provide to us as, as they move into that market as well. We also use different artificial intelligence or AI technology that is, that is beneficial in its use. You know, there are some of the programs out there that we have done test and evaluation with, such as BriefCam, where it can take hours upon hours of video and be able to compress that down into just minutes when you're looking for a search. If you were looking for someone wearing a red jacket, walking down Hay Street, you can put those criteria in and be able to produce that response in a relatively short amount of time. So when you look at things that affect staffing, someone who would have to go back and review video minute for minute or hour by hour, these, these technologies are available to be able to assist those detectives.
Thank you for that, Chief. And I think you touched it a bit, but in terms of what we have versus what we need for a city this size, a footprint this size, we have a large territory, so I know you had 200. Is that the ideal level of capacity? Is there, is there room for additional capacity? And how would that impact your ability to deliver services?
You know, based upon how some of our current servers are right now, there is some room for expansion to that system. But if you're going to truly look at expanding, not only from downtown, but out to other portions of the city that may not be completely covered, that infrastructure also has to increase as well with servers. But you also have to look at, how are we going to look at, you know, is that going to be cellular technology? Can some of those systems be able to support that? Working with different power companies, whether that's, you know, PWC, who we work with quite often, Duke Energy, South River, some of the other partners of being able to get those expansions into place. So yes, that's always a goal, to be able to expand the systems that we do have, but of course, it's going to take time in being able to move into those phases and also increasing the infrastructure as well. And at the same time, of course, that adds to an operating budget at the same time.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. As I was thinking about this, Mr. Mayor, we can't talk about public safety if we can't talk about our first responders who put their lives on the line all the time. I believe that we're going to celebrate Captain Collins this weekend on Saturday at Festival Park. Just yesterday, I had the opportunity to watch the International Firefighters Day, where Chief Dove and his staff went out to Maryland, which happened to fall on the same National Fallen Firefighters Day, to honor all those who have sacrificed themselves to keep our city safe. Let's make sure we keep that first and foremost in the minds as we have this discussion today. And Chief Joyce, I'm going to ask you some deliberate questions that I want deliberate answers to, because I don't want us to be here to just talk about it. We need to be about it, and we need to do something about it. So my first question is, during budget season coming up, I want you to propose to the city manager, who will bring it to council, on what dollar figure it would take for us to update our LPRs, as you just got finished stating. I don't think that if we want to keep our community safe, we can't keep our police officers and our firefighters with the same budget every year. They have to move when technology moves. If not, we're always going to be a step behind, because trust me, all those perpetrators out there, they're a step ahead of us. So we have to do all we can to stay a step ahead of them. Second, I want you to be prepared when the, the city attorney comes back with us with the approval to go through the red, red light camera program. I want that to be ready to roll as soon as that last court decision is done for us to implement that program. Third, I want to know, what do, I believe every LPR costs is around $20,000?
Give or take, yes, sir.
Give or take. I know it takes, what, Duke Energy for us to connect with to have those LPRs? You talked about donut holes. There are no LPRs in the southwest part of Fayetteville. A portion of what I want you to bring back to council is what it would take to purchase five more LPRs and put them in the southwest part of Fayetteville. I had a talk with Mr. Barksdale down at DOT about putting the cameras on the 295. If y'all know that, as a donut hole, as it goes from the county, as it goes to Fort Bragg, as it goes to the city. For us to collaborate our technology so everybody can read everybody else's cameras, so we can use that technology to help catch these perpetrators. I know this may not be in the technology department that we're talking about right now, but I believe, Mr. Mayor, when we talked about security and technology at these private-owned carnivals that are being held around, i.e. the one that held on Cliffdale and Raleigh Road, what technology can we use to help, whether they're private security or whether city or county security, to help protect those areas also? Those are the three items that I would like for you to bring back to us, Chief, with a dollar figure, of what council needs to approve come budget season, to give you the tools that you need to keep our community safe.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Councilman here, is your mic back working?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And Chief, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for echoing what I was speaking of on last Monday or last Thursday, a meeting. So thank you for that. I want to continue to reiterate a little more on what my colleague was just speaking of. I would, we're going to need more help. I think technology plays a major role. Now, nothing does better than eyes and ears, but we're going to need some additional help. I would love to, for us to increase cameras. I would love for us to increase cameras, especially within our recreation center areas, especially on the outsides. Mr. City Manager, I would like for us to consider, let it be one of our budget items this, this year as we move forward to increase the funding for our, I can't think of the name of our project right now, but where neighborhoods are allowed to purchase certain things to, to improve their neighborhoods, and I'm, and I'm speaking of-
Micro grant?
Concerning the micro grant, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Because we, we, we have the great opportunity where we can ask our neighbor, neighborhoods to, if you're aware of anything that is taking place in your neighborhood, that our police can come and ask you if your, if your ring doorbell is registered, what did you see? And a whole lot of neighborhoods could really use more of that, especially within those thoroughfares, those major thoroughfares of neighborhoods going in and out. This is the, the time for us to put up, if we're going to do anything to put somewhat of a dent in crime and wherever it may be increasing. So I would also be pushing for those increases. I would love to get some feedback from you and, and some of those areas that you think those increases may be need, those, those major thoroughfares of those neighborhoods, those other neighborhoods that we, where we don't have our cameras or our ring cameras, and then, of course, the cameras that we have on the poles. I would love to see more, where all of our major recreation centers are, where we have a flux of citizens going back and forth. I would love to see that improvement and that increase to move up to as high as we can get it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. All right.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to that?
Oh, yes, sir.
We do have our FUSIS program, and FUSIS allows, you know, we were able to see a number of the, all of the cameras through all our parks and recreation facilities working. We also are able to have the registry, so if someone does have a ring doorbell, you know, because of, it's proprietary, but they can still register to let us know that they have a camera that would be available to share some of that footage should an incident occur in and around their neighborhood. So we have that registry, and if someone would still like to go and become part of that program, they can go to our website and be able to register through the FUSIS program.
I was, I was aware of that. We talk about it a lot often in our community to watch meetings, but I would love to see those numbers increase. And if we, and if it's only by us helping them to purchase some, then I would love for us to increase that budget even the more. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And before I go to Councilman Benevente, speak to that a bit. We, the city did have a program where we were helping seniors buy those doorbell cams, and then we had a program where citizens could voluntarily allow their cameras to, to be into our network. Can you speak on that, and then I'll go to Councilmember Benevente?
Especially with FUSIS, that allows, you know, businesses, residential persons to be able to, one, they can share their video. If, if they have more than cameras, then we'd go in there, that we can get them a core through FUSIS so that they can share that video, so that we can see that. Working with a number of businesses along thoroughfares that may or may not have cameras, being able to, you know, have it registered, as you, as you said, Councilman here and, and Mr. Mayor, about a ring doorbell camera. You know, could that person go in there and say, okay, if I go to 123 any street, I know that they have some ring footage that they would be willing to share with law enforcement for an investigative purpose?
Got you. All right. Councilman Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, we're on 5.1. Are we talking about all four letters of the alphabet there?
That, that section, yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, you shared some information ahead of this meeting as it relates to the overall budget for the police department. Could you share that with the listening audience?
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente and Council. Yes, the, the city council has been a leader in this area for several years. I think the statistic that I'm trying to pull up is that over the last several years, our budget for the police department has increased over 18%. And I think that when you see the budget that will be provided to council later this week as well, we're presenting the budget to the public on this coming Monday, Monday week. I think that's the 12th, and we will continue in that tradition. We also, to Councilman Behar's point, we do have funds that can be shifted at council's direction when you see the budget, to possibly take into account some of the suggestions and direction that council is giving as it relates to items that you'd like to see as well.
So I guess the note that I have here from your email was that over the past five years, in fact, fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '25, the overall budget for FPD has grown 23 and a half percent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Chief Joyce, can you tell me a little bit more about the kinds of issues the license plate readers are meant to focus on?
So of course, they're gathering information from motorists who are traveling in and around the city, where those are located. They're gathering that data, so if a vehicle has been entered as stolen, it would send an alert to personnel that there has been a stolen vehicle alerted within that area. If someone is missing and they were known to be driving a vehicle, it could pick that up, someone who is endangered. So it picks up that license plate information that we're able to go back and to review. You know, if something had occurred in an area, we could go back and, and look at that LPR data to see if a potential suspect may have been fleeing from the area as well.
So when you say, you give just several examples of stolen vehicle, missing persons, is there a certain categories that are off limits to have LPRs used for?
Well, it's gathering all tags during that timeframe. For us to be able to go and enter a tag into there to be able to conduct a search, where of course, we need to be looking at an incident that we're investigating.
Is there any, but is there any limitation, like, and it's, it's only for, like you, like you gave the examples of stolen vehicles, that makes sense. Missing person, somebody, there was a shooting, drive-by, we need to find out where that car is, you know, those, those things make sense. I think it makes sense on the upper limit. I'm asking now, is there a line that, that where, you know, the, the LPRs are meant for things above a certain threshold of severity, and then there's things that don't necessarily qualify for that use of technology, I'm asking?
It would be for any investigative purpose. It could be from misdemeanor to felony-
Okay.
-in which we're looking at. It could have been as simple as, as a shoplifting case up to someone who had been kidnapped.
Facial recognition, have you, have anything in particular that you, that you're referencing when you talk about that? Is there a particular technology, like a brand name? I know before we got ShotSpotter, we got sound thinking. Is there a particular product that we're talking about when you reference the facial recognition?
We currently use some technology I would rather not share in, in this setting, as we use those as investigative purposes, unlike BriefCam, that is, that is not facial recognition, but it, it is being able to gather data, data sets for us to be able to go back and search on that.
Okay. And then, when you talk about the AI-driven tools, are there particular products that we're talking about specifically?
Well, you, you can go back and look at a number of things that are going to analyze those biometrics to look at, whether it's through facial recognition. There's other AI technologies out there, such as drone as a first responder, as being able to go into areas, go in and take an overview of a scene as officers are being able to respond to some of those areas. So there's a number of different AI technologies that are available.
But you haven't identified specifically which ones you're trying to get funded necessarily just yet.
Besides BriefCam and one that we already currently use, there are additional others that we would like to explore.
And then, Madam City Attorney, is that something that you guys can find out, whether it's indeed a product that can't be spoken about?
Yes, sir. We can find out and follow up with you.
And the reason I ask is because, you know, ShotSpotter, I think, got presented technically before I was ever elected to council, and I was disappointed to see the lack of consideration for the pros and the cons in the technology, things that we can protect against. And so if we're going to be implementing and talking about new technologies, we, I think the community deserves to understand the full scope and potential for the awesome power of AI, and, and how some cities may have experienced negative side effects from implementing these types of technologies. So, you know, we're always glad when things work out perfectly, but we've got to be aware and prepared for when they don't, especially when it involves government and, you know, people's civil liberties. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Chief, need to ask a couple of things. One, Councilmember Thompson brought up about the red light camera. So we know that the court case, we had red light cameras throughout the city. We know the court case had, had paused the use of those, and as that comes to a conclusion, the infrastructure of those cameras are still there, so it still is wired and those kind of things. Can some of those sites be used for the expansion of this network so that you're not paying additional money to run electricity, whether it's not, you already have cameras that are positioned that can be used?
Of course, that was through another vendor that, that we did not use at the time.
Not necessarily the technology itself integration, but I mean that the power source, you know, that if they have power that goes to power that camera, then the power is on the pole in order to do other things.
I'm not sure when they were all decommissioned, if they removed those power sources as well, or if that was something that was capped, but that would be something that we could look at. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And that, that's, that was the, the main question I had. Councilmember Thompson, and then, and then, Council, what we'll do if there are no other questions, I'll look to you for kind of a consensus motion that Chief Joyce would get with, you know, maybe our IT folks and, and some of the best practices in the industry about some proposals to bring back for budgetary consideration for, for these things. Yes, sir. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This pretty much pertains to 5.2, but a little bit to 5.1 also, because it was just brought to my attention about the drones that a council member was referring to. Do we have enough drones in your arsenal to help us with some of this AI technology?
We, we do have a number of drones, and we'll continue to look at how we can increase the capacity of those, but also looking at drone as a first responder. I think it's cutting-edge technology that some other cities are using, not only in North Carolina, but across the US, and how we can get drones moving to a location effectively and quickly to be able to analyze some of those scenes and make it safe for our personnel and the citizens in and around that area.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to comment on one more thing. We talked about the FUSIS program. I also like all of residents to realize, if you're in a community and you have a neighborhood camera, you can also sign up your neighborhood camera with the police department under the FUSIS program, so if something happens in your neighborhood and you have a camera, they have access to that camera also, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Benevente, check around, and then I'll go to Councilmember here.
No, sir. I was just getting ready to make a motion on the matter.
Councilman here had made the, all right.
I would just ask that, are we direct our chief of police to work with our IT folks to present to us the pros and the cons to some surveillance and technology? So when budget time comes, we've got a full scope understanding of what is something we can invest in.
All right. This is a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by here, discussion on that motion. And that is, just for clarification purposes, to ask him to come back with recommendations to expand the, the technology capabilities as discussed today. And of course, it'll, it'll, it'll have pros and cons, but I know you specifically laid into that, so I don't want this to be complicated. So is the direction for him to bring it back? What, what is the caveat to that? Can, can you explain that?
Yes, sir. So when it comes to any technology, we've got to understand its implications in full. So I'd like to know from the chief's perspective that, you know, if we implement a certain technology, one of the cons may be, we've got to hire more officers, because somebody's got to man the booth, right? It might require additional, you know, there's, there's, there's pros and cons to a lot of things. So I don't want to- So, I don't want to limit our assumption that anything he presents just needs to be rubber stamped. I think that we should deeply consider what we're getting ready to invest in, especially because, you know, technology from the government is something that we should all be wary of implementing without asking all the questions necessary.
All right. Discussion, you had a question? Mayor Proton?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Chief Joyce, my question is, the four things that we have, that we are discussing tonight, we have talked about over and over again, and I know we've had the conversations. So, my question to you is, have you done the research on this already? I know that it probably hasn't been brought to us at budget time, but I know it has been discussed. So, what I don't want to see is that we're in budget discussing the pros and the cons. I think if that's the way the motion's going to go, I would like to see the pros and the cons come before we're making decisions. So, the budget is, how much are we going to put towards this and what does the police force want? And then, my next question is, in the past, have you researched this and know how much it's going to be already? Because for some reason, I feel there is a number out there.
So, we currently do work with a vendor because of, we have to maintain the public safety cameras that we have as well as our license plate readers. So, yes, there are cursory searches that are already taking place to look at what expansion would look like, but those dollar figures have increased from, you know, the most recent purchase that we made. So, of course, you have to look at inflation and how that may affect those overall costs, but yes, that has occurred.
So, and I'm, I think the point that we're at right now of the way things have gone the past few months, I think that the cost isn't what we need to be looking at as much as when it can get done, what you need and what you have researched. And that is my concern, that if we wait till the budget, then we're going to have this whole conversation again during the budget. But I heard you said you would adjust it. Okay.
All right. Councilmember Benevente, you're amending it.
I'd be glad to amend it to say that we get some feedback prior to the budget so that we can digest and review those types of pros and cons. I'm not necessarily worried about just the dollar figure, y'all. I'm talking about more details about what products we're using. So, I gladly amend it to have that information come back first so that by the time we get to budget, you know, things can move more expeditiously.
All right. Councilmember Thompson and Behar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make it clear that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, my colleague is talking about the new technology that we don't already have. He's not referring to the additional LPRs that I'm asking for or the red light camera program that is already in existence. We just need the dollar figure on those. I think he's more referring to the facial technology and recognition and all that other stuff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Behar and then Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it possible to adding to the motion that I would love to second if, if we could have some type of a goal, a time period of implementation, if possible? Is that too early to might be to request?
Yes, sir. If I can do that, one of the reasons that the chief doesn't have some of this is, Council may recall when we had, was it Hurricane Matthew or was it Florence?
Matthew.
Much of our camera network we had went down, and it took us literally years to build it back up. And so, what we have tasked him to do with our IT director who may be here, Willie Johnson and others, is to take the preferred system that the Police Department, working with their current system, has, and for us not to only overlay it against the budget, but also to overlay it against, as I can't remember which Councilman said it, the implementation time.
Right.
The chief may not have said it, and if you did, I apologize, chief. His initial focus that he shared this morning was in making sure that we had downtown saturated almost because of the core business areas that we have. But he's not, we're not ready yet to say $3 million because that may be over two or three years, and we have, don't even know if, while we have the reason to believe that the network can support more cameras, we're almost sure of that. The build-out toward that, he would hate to give a number and that make people think that the City Council has ordered, you know, 200 additional cameras, which you can, but if it's going to take three years for us to put them in, we want to make sure we give you that number at the same time. As it relates to the budget, the budget is done, I mean, for next year. And what, as I mentioned, we have...
You mean the proposed budget?
The recommended budget is done.
There you go. Yeah, so we're just now getting started in that. I got you.
Mr. Mayor, what was that, Councilman Behar said, and writing in order? So, the recommended budget with the, as I mentioned, has flexibility in it for Council to make whatever decisions that you choose. But we want to make sure with the other items, which are also on here as well, that the chief not give a number, and then again, we can't deliver within a reasonable timeframe. But it's there, and we look forward to those discussions early next week with the Council as well.
I'm ready. I think we're ready. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, budget discussion starts next week. So, I mean, to piggyback off of his question about the timing, how long do you think you would need, because we start discussion next week?
Staff will start working on it at Council's direction, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Sounds good. So, Council, is the motion given to ask the chief to come back with technology recommendations prior to, so that it can be examined prior to the budget discussions? It's been discussed. Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
She says green.
She says green. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chief, don't get too far, I'm sure you'll be called on again. Yeah, matter of fact... Might need to get you a stool. All right. All right, 5.2. Augmented security presence opportunities. Chief, the recommendation here was, was simple as this. When you're having large-scale events like Dogwood or festivals, oftentimes you go to places. I went to Lenovo and went to a concert, Fantasia Concert, and it wasn't Raleigh PD or Wake County at the door. I guess it was a contracted service to check your bags and let you walk through the scanner and those kind of things. Tell me how, as we talk about this, because maybe that goes with, with one of the other items coming, when we have a large-scale gathering like Dogwood the other day, it's kind of an open area, and Council was presented some options a few times, a few months back to secure that to where it's a more controlled environment. I mean, you may at one time have 7,000, 8,000 people in this, in this area. Speak to it a bit as to, one, how that area can be set up a little bit more like a venue? You go to Red Hat or you go to some of these other places that have large gathering and shows, you go through a checkpoint, maybe with a bag or metal detector or however, and it may not necessarily be federal PD or law enforcement there that does it. Talk to me about, you know, one, the use of contracted opportunities like that, kind of like we went through at City Hall here, you go through it, and there's a contracted service that tells you, you know, you can't bring this in or what have you. So, talk to that a little bit.
So, when you look at like Dogwood Festival, of course, so that is a large footprint. It's more than just festival park. So, it's along Ray Avenue, Hay Street. So, that is a very large footprint. But if you're looking solely just at festival park proper, you know, during Dogwood Festival, they even had Event One staffing, who was working at some of those main entrances. And of course, they're not magtometers such as you would see, the same staff who works at Segra during the Woodpecker baseball games, some of the same staff that works the games are out there working as well. So, I think Dogwood had already contracted with those individuals to be at some of those egress locations for that, but it'd also have to be set into the parameters of what Dogwood, their committee is going to allow or not allow into the festival as well, of what those individuals would be able to enforce if there was private security that manned the areas.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Behar, you had a question?
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. This is along the lines of security. Because we have so many major events within the festival park, I've always thought and others that it's just like an open free-for-all into the park, especially the big area where the stages and things along that line, people set up with the vendor trucks. And I know this is not just with you, but I would like for us to consider as a point of safety for our residents, that we consider some way of closing in the park a little bit as far as the entrances, because they're so open. You can go different little places, you can jump over the little water and get in, and so there are so many kind of ways you can just get right into the park. Is that something that we could have a discussion to consider as far as safety in all the major events that we have downtown that end up at festival park, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. One of the things that the chief can, can also expound on the Council's interest is that for any event that's held downtown or on city property, it goes through the Special Events Committee. Special Events Committee is comprised of all of the city departments, and I think also may even have NC DOT or other representation as well. And for festival park, we do have a couple of natural points of entry, and I think that the interest that has been expressed is to hard-nose, to make them more, even more secure, possibly with metal detectors.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
And that's included something that can be done. For the first item, which was contracted partnerships with private security, unless it is a city-sponsored event or a city co-sponsored event like the Dogwood or...
Folk Festival.
Folk Festival, or maybe even Juneteenth or something like that where the city is underwriting a portion of the security, it falls to the party or the event organizer to either contract with FPD or other private security, and we can definitely increase our posture around that. I think though, if the interest is, and I think this is what we're hearing, is that we work to make it even more secure at the park, and we try to direct as many events to festival park as we can so that you can control the access, not so much on the promenade, and maybe to the extent possible, pull them off of Hay Street and other areas. That's when you can be most secure, as the mayor mentioned about like Red Hat Theater, where you can have a controlled environment.
Right.
But for Dogwood Festival, which stretched all the way from Person Street to the Market House, from Market House up Hay Street to Ray Avenue, from Ray Avenue all the way down to, what is that?
Rowan.
Rowan Street. That was such a very large footprint, but I think the interest that has been expressed in my conversations has been for the areas that we can control and can harden, which is festival park and its surrounding environments, that we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I would like for us to consider that too, Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Manager. Thank you.
All right. Councilman McGreen, and then McNair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of my questions is probably more for the police chief or the fire marshal, but if we looked, if we add perimeter security and we look at enclosing that area more, would that not require us to limit the number of people that access that area?
I'll defer to Chief Dubb.
There will have a, there will have to be an egress plan put in place, but those, they can be worked through.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember McNair.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the organizers for the festival park because my grandchildren and I, we had a wonderful time. However, the department that they wanted to attend was actually across the street. Is that Ray Avenue, correct? So, we're contemplating putting barriers in that area because that area is wide open.
Yeah, this question for me?
Yes.
All right. So, the thought here, the thought here, what you got going on, Mayor Proton? All right, the thought here was, you know, if you look at, if you look at large-scale events, look at like what happened with American Trail down in New Orleans and Mardi Gras, right? That you have a festival, a festive time that has a large area, as he said. The festival park was one piece, that possibly I saw they had good presence there because you had a mass amount of people there, and you were able to predict what time they would be there. Concert started at 6:00 or at 7:00, so you knew when the bulk of your people would be there. And the question was, was that if that was a secure environment and maybe you contracted that piece out, could that help you give more of a larger perimeter in that footprint? I mean, we're just at a different time now. I'm not necessarily saying bad things are going to happen, but look across the city where people are having things, and you don't want to be that city that has an incident that you didn't talk about ahead of time. You know, I knew and know her in dealing with how New Orleans took a black eye with trying to secure an area with bike racks, right? And so, as we look at this, when you're talking about tens of thousands of people, and you just spoke and said this area could go from Person Street back to the festival park, the plan and the reason for bringing this is, how do we make a safety plan, which I know you do, but how do we, how do we expand that in today's environment? That's, that was the point of it. Now, Councilmember McNair, I hope that kind of touched a little bit of what you were asking.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the area is secured as well because it was wide open, and at one point, there was some activity going on over there, but it wasn't heavily secured.
Got you.
So, of course, you know, as Mr. Hewitt spoke about it, during the special event planning, we are a part of that process as well. We do have an operations plan in place. During an event such as a big as the Dogwood Festival, we do break it up into sectors to make sure that we do have adequate staffing there. Not only is it FPD personnel, we work with other law enforcement partners to make sure that we have a very visible presence during that festival to make sure everyone feels safe as they come to Recorate in downtown Fayetteville. I spoke to a number of individuals, some on Council as well, that says, hey, I was there Friday night, I couldn't turn without being able to see a law enforcement officer. Even on Sunday, when I came back down here after the events had occurred on Saturday, Sunday was bustling and still running in additional people who said, hey, I was there that night, but your officers were there in a, in a matter of seconds. So, it's comforting for me to know that our men and women who were working that night, they're making sure that they're highly visible in and around those areas and being able to respond as quickly as they did.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I was just about to unmute my button after I heard that last statement you said because I was one of those individuals that walked the Dogwood Festival, and I probably spoke to every police officer that I seen, and they were out there abundantly. And you know me, I talked to pretty much every last one of them. Some of them are out there, Mr. Mayor, working double shifts. Some of them out there was volunteer. Some of them was out there was volunteered, and some was out there hired. But what I would like to see, Mr. Mayor, is for us to also be part of the solution. You know, we need to use, we just got finished talking about our IT and our modern technology. We need to bring some, some drones out there. We need, we need to bring some more cameras out there at festival park. We need to fund some undercover people out there just to scout around to see what's going on. These are the things that we can do to help ourselves. I don't think blocking off and confining individuals is always a good thing because now you're limiting their space and where they can go. And then, if there is something that happens, now you have to in emergency response, open up a gate or something to let somebody out so everybody's not going through one exit, stampeding over one another. So, there's a lot of pros and cons, but I am thankful for the great job that our FPD is doing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, I guess where we come out of this, oh, I see, Councilman McNair had another question? Yes, ma'am.
I kind of like want to respond to Councilmember Thompson there. While I was actually visiting that side of the street, I did not feel totally safe, whether we need to close folk in or not. Across the street is pretty much monitored, but that side was just wide open, and that brought fear to me. And like I said, there was some activity, there was some officers there, the county was there, but however, there was a lot of people out there. A bunch.
Right. And I'll go to Mayor Proton, and then I'll, I'll try to summarize this in a way that, you know, we can give you some direction.
Yes, sir.
Let me address this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I hope that I circled this back around. So, that Sunday, you know, the director had called a lot of us, and I'd went out there that day, and one of the questions that I asked, I said, if we would have closed off festival park, would that have made it easier for you and her moving? And there was two of them, and they said, yes, absolutely. But as she did say that, she did say that she had done a festival in Austin, Texas, that it was not lockdown, but they had barriers all around it. So, they're doing it in twice the footprint, but there's creative ways that can be doing that. But the question I think that we have through all of this... But the question I think that we have through all of this is that we have been discussing this for two to three years on closing down Festival Park and making it more like a red hat and controlled environment. So I think there's two different things that we're talking about, but at the end of the day, I think we know that we have to have everything contained when we do have these festivals that people cannot come in from all sides.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So Chief, I guess as we, as we talk about this and this kind of really piggybacks into 5.3, large gathering safety, best practices for that in today's environment. I guess where my interest of asking council to consider this is to give some direction to you to come back with a structured plan that we're going to hope that this, these festivals continue, you know, and they grow from here. It's been, it's been prior of mine and many council members, that's how we got to Juneteenth and July 4th and some of those activities we, we go to other places for, we want to have here, but we're also in a different, in a different environment to where we have to think about things that we shouldn't. And so the question will become, can you come back with recommendations as to how we can make this a more controlled and safer environment? And that leads into any recommendations you would say about restrictions on backpacks and masks and different things that, that other places do not allow. You know, just going to other places, you're not able to take in a bag at a football game unless it's a clear see-through bag. You're not able to go in with a mask on unless you have a medical purpose and a reason for it, but we had all of that this weekend because I don't think we've ever had to address that. So I think what collective council members and we've heard from the public is, one, how do we secure that? Even Segura Stadium has a process. They don't have armed Fayetteville PD there, but it's, it's a process of their people who tell you you can't do certain things within those confines. So that is one of the interests about how we do that. We've had conversations with the manager about those things that we need to do to make Festival Park a little less porous, but also as it comes to large gatherings, period. What would you like to see? And you don't have to have all the answers today, but I think what, you know, I'll take a consensus temperature check, but I think what the interest of the board is, is that there be a plan that we can see come into implementation quickly so that when we get these next events that we are ready and we're learning how, how to do it better.
Well, and it starts, you know, of course, we'd have to sit down with Special Events Committee, those applicants who are applying, you know, they, they have some duty in this as well of recommendations for the events that they're wanting to host. How are they going to assist in being able to make that venue safe as well so it's not lying all on our backs to, to make that happen, you know, and what recommendations they have at the same time.
Well, I guess, I guess my point is I think we've got to give some kind of framework, right? That if, if you have 5,000 people expected, then these are your protocols and whoever the promoter is or the company is will have to follow those guidelines because I don't want to leave, you don't want to leave each plan up to each individual company or promoter. I think the city has to give some guidelines, you know, maybe 100 to 500 people, this is what it looks like, 500 to 1,000 or just some clarity in that.
And that does exist right now when we look at the number of attendees that they are expecting, how many law enforcement officers, you know, if that's a city-sponsored event, you know, that we need to bring to the table. If they're going to have an event that's not city-sponsored, what they need to do as far as hiring, whether that's, you know, FPD or some other private security, those numbers that need to be represented there to make sure the venue remains safe. So those things are in place, but we'll, we'll look at other best practices, you know, some things like you said, Segura. I know Segura, you have to have a clear bag when you're coming in or you can't bring it in. You know, it's the same way with different graduations around the country. You can't bring certain things into, to a facility. So there's a number of places that we can look at for some of those best practices.
All right. Mayor Protim had, had something.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is, if you go into the Crown Coliseum for anything, they give you a piece of paper that's this big and says, if it's any bigger than this, you're not going in. I had one that was like here and I still couldn't get in. They, they just do not let you in. So if it's not clear and it's bigger than this, you have to go back to your car. My question is to the city attorney, does this go through policy when somebody's coming to get a special use permit, that we can do that?
Mayor Protim, not a special use permit, but maybe you're thinking about special events permits?
I'm sorry, specially, I meant to say special events. So does, could we bring this back to the policy committee or could we do it here to say that if you are going to do a special events permit, you have to have, you have to have a clear, I'm ready to get this thing done. Are we going to have a clear bag or a small bag? Is that our route to do that?
You could do it right now as a council action, doesn't need to go to policy.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Joyce, I appreciate your diligence and wanting to make sure that you're coordinating with special events and probably Cool Springs Downtown District, you know, Dogwood Festival, some of the major players to include their input. City Manager Hewitt, from the temperature of council on this issue, am I right to have some concern about increased costs to people that are interested in doing events, special events, large events? If we raise the security standards, and certainly I'm not saying we have to choose, pick or choose, because if it costs more, I think that the city, because we have higher standards now, that perhaps we can contribute more because I don't want it to necessarily burden an event planner not to have the event at all because of our raised standard, that, you know, there is some consideration for having to pay for additional security for raising the standards because I wouldn't have this have, this to have a chilling effect on people who want to do cool things in Fayetteville and host events. Now, at this, you know, on the flip side, we can't have incidents like we had at Dogwood Festival, right? Because that, that is another chilling event on people attending such events. So, you know, I agree that we've got to do something to enhance security, but I don't want to, I want to make sure that there's some math that's being considered here and the cost that may trickle down to somebody who isn't Dogwood, right? Someone who might just be trying something. You know, I heard the R and B Festival, for example, had a hard time getting people to sign up from FPD to work that event. Could you, could you answer maybe some of that practical issues?
Thank you. The, there is a cost for any enhancements which are done, but what I think the council is asking us to do to try to sidestep the direct answer to your question is, I'm honest about that, so, is we would come back with, I hadn't used this while, poo-poo platter of things that the council could consider or enact. I think the clear bag policy is something that would not take a lot.
No stakes, sure.
The, but what that would mean would be for the Dogwood Festival, all of the vendors who were there who were giving out backpacks. Or who were handing out materials that, you know, at some point, and this is a conversation I had with some council members as well, it might be that, that your posture changes as the day goes on a longer. So if you're just having information fair along Hay Street and people are just walking and talking and around, you've got plenty of officers, that may be open. But as the day gets longer and the activities become more intense and the crowds grow larger and you start moving toward the entertainment stage at Festival Park, you may have a more tightened security, which would tell people, you need to go put that in the car. You can't bring that into the park. But at the moment, the greatest cost for someone that would be new would potentially be if we have to have more security. But that could be offset if you have limited access to the park. So if you're limiting the park to the back gate, which is largely for the bands to set up or the organizers, and then the walking bridge and the main entrance off of Ray Avenue, then those could be two controlled access points and then, of course, the creek. But we would want to come back and we would hopefully do a pros and cons that we could look at that with the councils. And, but it will likely have an enhanced cost for enhanced safety.
And that would be just my only discussion point, Mr. Mayor, if I could be so bold that we consider that, right? Because if we raise the bar, someone's going to have to meet that bar. And I don't know if the, you know, if we can, if we can take that on, I'm not saying we don't do it, I'm just saying perhaps we offer to pay for that kind of security.
Well, point taken, but I'm sure, you know, when Dreamville was there, they, Dreamville folks paid Red Hat to do it. Most of these places are handled by someone else. So, but point, point taken. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if I am ready to make a motion that we-
Mayor, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, she told me. I'm sorry about that. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor, and afterwards I would love to second her motion, but my, it was some great point.
Yeah, because she's in the entertainment space. I'll be interested to hear. Let, let me know when she picks back up.
Yes, sir.
And she did say she wanted to second this motion.
Yes.
All right, go ahead. Mayor Protim, maybe she'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm city attorney, I might need some help on this. So I would like to make a motion that we make it policy for the Special Events Committee that only clear bags are allowed into events at any city-owned property. And I would like to add no mask unless it is a, they have a medical note. And a reason, medical reason, I should say. Thank you. Help me out.
Medical exemption.
Medical exemption.
All right. So excludes medical purposes, people who have legitimate bona fides. All right. So it's a motion. Yeah, I'm coming to discussion. Let me, let me recap. So it's a motion by Mayor Protim to have staff return with the policy restricting or, or only allowing clear bags to go into these larger events on, on city properties such as Festival Park or city-sponsored events like Dogwood or Juneteenth or those kind of large gatherings and in addition to mask that unless, with, with, with a medical exemption, with a medical exception. She's on. All right. So that's the motion that was seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. We have discussion on it, but Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, you had dropped off.
I'm sorry, I was traveling through a bad area. I just wanted to say we definitely need to not over-police the situation. We just need to make sure that it's safe by having people come in, making sure that we're monitoring what's coming in our community.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right, discussion. We have Councilmember Benevente, McNair and Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As city attorney, can you tell me if there's any legal restrictions on anybody asking somebody for their medical information? Because if we're saying they need a note, is, that's very different. That's what you said. You said note. So when you say medical purposes, what, what sort of proof positive do they have to give? Because I don't know if, and now this is my question to you, city attorney, authority does a vendor or a security personnel have to demand that?
So first I would say that we already do have a state statute as to mask. I can have one of the police attorneys come up and brief council on that if the council so wishes. Secondly, as with all of council's actions, before we bring it back, we make sure that what we do is compliant with the law. So before we bring anything back, we will run through all of that to make sure we're good with that.
And I guess I would love to hear from that person.
Counsel, Mayor.
Hey, good evening, Attorney.
Good evening. So general statute 14 dash 1, 2, specifically 7, 8, 9, and 10 already address individuals having masks in public. And there are already exemptions built into that statute such as under 14 dash 12.11, the exemption under A6 says any person wearing a medical or surgical grade mask for the purpose of preventing the spread of contagious disease. So somebody, it is unlawful to wear that mask, but they do have those medical exemptions built in.
So what are the other two exceptions, sir?
Medical or surgical grade mask.
Oh, those are only two exceptions.
Well, there's others, traditional holiday costumes, so obviously Halloween, right? You can wear a mask. And there's numerous other exceptions in there, but I think for the purpose of council and talking with Dogwood and things like that, it would be the surgical or medical grade.
Well, I mean, it makes me think of, you know, what are the Comic Cons, right? I mean, there's plenty of events where people are wearing masks outside of the holidays.
You said costumes.
Well, he said during holidays.
Well, that, again, that's just one exception. So number two could be any person or person engaged in trades and employment where a mask is worn for the purpose of ensuring the physical safety of the wearer or because of the nature of the occupation, trade or profession. Any person or persons using mask in theatrical productions, including use in Mardi Gras celebrations and masquerade balls, persons wearing gas masks prescribed in civil defense drills and exercises or emergencies. And then it has all kinds of exceptions for societies, organizations, parade, rituals, initiation ceremonies and many other exceptions.
So that's already the general statute?
That is a state statute. Yes, sir.
And I guess the other question that city manager Hewitt mentioned was that there are vendors that will give out non-clear bags as swag, as his free things. Are we now prohibiting the give, you know, PWC, you know, bags at?
I think if you have rules, the vendors will put whatever that language is on a bag that complies. I mean-
Well, I guess this is where I think when Chief Joyce said that he wanted to touch base with all of the relevant parties, it was to ensure that, you know, there is some level of consensus about, you know, what's, because there's a clear bag policy getting into Dreamville Fest, but they also give out fanny packs that are not clear because you got them from inside, so you didn't bring anything inside of it. So it kind of doesn't, it's moot at that point. So I guess, I know that the cameras are rolling and we want to show that we did something today, but I don't want us to jump the gun either on things that we haven't thought through.
And we know the cameras are rolling, so.
Well, I mean, that's what it feels like, that we're just kind of jumping ahead to do things without actually considering what we're actually doing.
All right, council member. We know what a performance is coming. You want one of those masks? All right. All right. So let's, we've got a motion on the floor, a second by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. We have discussion. Let's see who we haven't had. McNair, Green and Davis.
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to tie up those loose ends about your mask because it wasn't really defined clearly to me.
What, in the general statute?
Yeah, before he came up.
Oh, okay, okay.
Before he came up.
Okay.
And I know on New Year's, we have masks that are given to us on New Year's night.
I think they say they're permissible if it's festive. All right. Councilman McGreen.
Attorney Hall. Do we have an ordinance in place that allows us to enforce the statutes around masks?
That's what this motion is, isn't it?
Well, we don't have an ordinance in, in place. It would just be, it would just be enforced by any law enforcement officer.
Okay. I just, we've had issues with that in the past, that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. To, I guess, to talk about the mask, can we be more specific as like, can we just say ski masks or something like that so that we won't get into, because someone may not want to share their medical reasons for having a mask.
Well, I think the statute doesn't require to, to give it because that's a HIPAA violation probably, but I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure the statute, you want to read the statute again, Attorney? Gives exemptions for-
I'm clear on the statute. I'm saying can we implement the ski mask part because that's what this covers your whole face.
Well, I guess you, you could have that option, but you know, it's just like, just like they say, you can't have guns on school ground, right? That's a state law, but you can put a sign up that says, this premise says, says that you can't do this here. So I think that's all it is because nothing we pass can overrule or go more strict than what the state statute is.
Yeah, but in our language, can we be specific though? That's my ask.
All right. So we've got a motion on the floor. That's up to the motion maker in a second, but I think all of those concerns are covered. I'm sure the general assembly went through all of this, but, but counsel, that's your pleasure.
State statute is already in effect and thus already enforceable?
Yes, sir.
So what effect would this motion really have on masks if it's already the law?
As I understand it, this was to include it in our special events-
Process.
-permit process.
Was included in the special events permit process, but at the special event, it couldn't, like just previously at Dogwood Festival, are you saying that an officer couldn't go up to a person in a ski mask and say, hey, you're violating the statute that Attorney Hall just read? Was included in the special events permit process, but at the special event, it couldn't, like, just previously at Dogwood Festival, are you saying that an officer couldn't go up to a person in a ski mask and say, hey, you're violating the statute that, um, Attorney Hall just read?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So a week ago, we had Dogwood Festival. If someone was wearing a ski mask and, uh, officer went up to them and said, hey, you're in violation of the general statute just read by Attorney Hall, you need to take that off. Is that correct?
Is that correct, that the officer could do that? Yes.
Okay, so it's already the case.
All right, well, then you want my reaffirmation. So I got you as a green. All right.
I guess someone has to act like we did something crazy.
We've discussed it.
We didn't do anything, you know?
All right, now, Pro Tim, then we need to vote, y'all.
Okay, so then I'm gonna say this last thing. When, when I'm sitting there saying this about clear bags and making this part of coming into our city property when we have special events, if we put it into perspective, when your child goes to school, to public school, they go through a metal detector and they have to have clear bags. And all that's in there is ninety percent of the people in that building are eighteen and under. And we are taking our, our kids, our residents, out with thousands of people. So I don't think what I'm asking for is out of the ordinary.
It's redundant.
So I'm going to call for the vote. I'm keeping my motion as it sustains as for city property for our special events. So I call for the vote.
All right. Can, can we, all right, votes being called. Yep. All right, counsel, what's up? All right, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin? All right.
Green.
She said green? She said red or green?
Yes, green.
Green, okay. All right, motion carries now. One, those voting in opposition is Councilmember Benevente. I'm gonna follow state law. All right, all right. All right, so good job, guys. Uh, that kind of covered five point three. All right, so moving to five point five. Um, uh, Chief Joyce, told you not to go far. All right, so, uh, this was an item that I brought. Um, we, we all know, uh, the power of community participation, see something, say something kind of thing. Um, oftentimes, uh, people utilize our Crime Stoppers because it, it is, uh, discreet, it's anonymous, uh, but there is an incentive with it. Since I can remember, I remember it used to be a thousand, now it's up to two thousand. So my proposal for council was, and I notice this kind of ran through a separate part of, and maybe you can explain that a bit. So the funding that Crime Stoppers gives away for reward, where does the, the source of funds come from? Is it out of the police budget or is it a separate nonprofit?
Such as their fundraisers, they just had, uh, the Friday of Dogwood Festival. Um, that is their largest fundraising event, uh, for the monies that are awarded for those anonymous tips. And there, we actually have some of the board members here from the Crime Stoppers Board, if you would like to hear from them tonight as well.
Yeah, where, where are they? Who is?
Uh, Duncan Hubbard.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I saw. I saw they had the blue shirts, okay. Yeah, good evening, sir. I saw you, I saw you earlier with the Crime Stoppers shirt. Yeah, so, uh, the question was, can you speak to a little bit about, uh, I guess the two thousand dollar, uh, reward system that people take advantage of and where you get those source of, source of funds?
Sure, thanks so much. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to be here. Thank you, counsel, for allowing us to be here. Crime Stoppers is a nonprofit. Um, it was started in, uh, uh, the early eighties with Chief Ron Hanson. Uh, Crime Stoppers has continued to grow throughout the years. Uh, we are, like I said, we are a nonprofit. Chief Joyce mentioned, uh, the barbecue is our largest fundraiser we do. Uh, this year, we surpassed all previous records for selling barbecue, so we were extremely excited about that. That just means more money in our, in our accounts to be able to help the police department with these rewards. One thing that I would like to, like, make sure counsel is aware of is that Crime Stoppers, um, not only assists the city of Fayetteville, but we assist Spring Lake, we assist Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, we assist Hope Mills, we also assist North Carolina Highway Patrol. So our monies are stretched between those agencies. Um, as we bring these tips in, it's important because Crime Stoppers allows a tipster to remain completely anonymous, report the information to a call center that reports it to the jurisdiction. Once that is reported, it's passed on to investigators to investigate. The tip is determined to be a good tip. The tipster is paid cash money based upon his or her information that's passed to law enforcement. Crime Stoppers pays solely off of an arrest. We do not pay off of a conviction. Convictions could take years, uh, and the tipsters that are providing this information to allow law enforcement to close these cases basically is information that's needed, uh, very rapidly. Um, I do feel that our law enforcement, specifically Fayetteville, Cumberland County, Spring Lake, Hope Mills, and the Highway Patrol would use the information that they have. They would have, obviously, the necessary, um, probable cause to make that arrest. Uh, and Crime Stoppers has helped our city in particular on many arrests throughout the years. So we're grateful to have this partnership. We would just like to be able to help in however we can, but we would like to be able to communicate and understand it was slightly a surprise that we saw the, the five thousand dollars. Uh, I'll be very honest with you. Um, many of our tips are several thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars right now is our current maximum through our bylaws. Uh, law enforcement, uh, agencies across the state, of which, um, uh, we have a representative from our own police department that is on southeastern Crime Stoppers, that, uh, covers a great part of the eastern states from, uh, from Maine down to Florida. We gather information from other Crime Stopper programs so that we are similar and like based upon size of population and, uh, and the type crimes that we may experience.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. Uh, so, um, I guess the thought process was, um, do, is the reward something eligible for any and all crimes and any and all tips that lead to arrests? Or is it, are it for certain? Are it violent? Uh, what, what is the criteria?
Basically, if it is a crime based upon North Carolina general statute, it is a crime that has occurred, Crime Stoppers is eligible to promote, and when I use the word promote, advertise that particular crime through the different agencies, uh, to allow folks to realize that we're looking for critical information. It may be information from the Dogwood Festival. It may be information from, uh, recent events that we've had within our city. Um, our goal is to provide tips to law enforcement to allow them to make a quick and speedy arrest based upon the information that they receive.
So, so I can assume that you all have some process or discretion as to which ones you want to offer that reward for. It's not for all crimes committed, right? You, you have certain ones that you advertise for. Talk, talk to that a little bit.
Well, we work with the PIO, with the City Police Department. Uh, the City PIO is one of the main liaisons that we have that allow us to, uh, to gather this information. Crime Stoppers Board itself is a board of fifteen, uh, non-law enforcement personnel. Uh, many of us are employed, some are retired, some have criminal justice backgrounds. Uh, but, but basically they're a public service person. We're wanting to help our law enforcement. Uh, one of the nice things that we do, uh, is that we currently use a point system, which is used by many law enforcement, uh, Crime Stopper programs. The point system basically allows us to base the seriousness of the crime in conjunction with the cash money that's, that is awarded. So certainly crimes that are a higher profile type of, profile type of crime, crime will in fact have a higher payout. So if I was wanted for possession of stolen property or I had gone into a local store in Fayetteville and I had shoplifted, that is gonna obviously be perhaps a slightly less than something that may be in a higher crime rate of perhaps a homicide.
Right, so, so my point of asking that was that you, you, you have the discretion, the thought was on, on some of those higher-profile, uh, more visible, you know, more impactful, whatever your scoring system is, is there a way that, that the reward, uh, can be raised to incentivize, um, more participation? And that was the thought behind that.
Sure, and, and we have done this. Uh, matter of fact, we have a case currently that is currently pending in which there is a private donor that is making an additional contribution over and above the two thousand that Crime Stoppers would pay. That reward, once it is finalized and processed, that reward will be significantly higher than even the proposed that you had mentioned.
Okay.
Uh, and we have had numerous cases where private individuals have come to us and allowed us to, to specifically have more monies. They write a check, we deposit the check, uh, and then we then increase that reward based upon the measures of the two thousand dollars that Crime Stoppers currently pays.
Gotcha. All right, Councilman Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Crime Stoppers. I'd like the audience to realize that this is a group of volunteers that dedicate their time and hard work to keep our community safe. I think what was failed to be mentioned was, uh, my previous chief back there, Captain Stroupay, who's in charge of our crime department, who is, solves ninety-eight point six percent of all the crime in the city of Fayetteville. I'm gonna say that again. Over ninety-eight percent of the crime in Fayetteville is solved. Crime Stoppers is a big part of that. Mr. Mayor, they just received an award in Duncan, I'm sorry, Mr. Hubbard, I know you weigh back.
You're fine.
Elaborate to the audience about the southeastern Crime Stoppers award you guys just received.
We were recently awarded a, uh, uh, an award that Captain Stroupay was allowed to, I accept on behalf of the Crime Stoppers Board, uh, in which we came in, believe it was sec- first place? First place. Um, it was first place based upon the municipality as far as the city, a city our size, with the fact of our engagement, of how we have engaged and how we have paid out Crime Stopper rewards to help reduce, um, officers' attention to a case, to allow, uh, officers to make a speedy arrest and not necessarily allow officers to continue to just look for leads that they're, they're having to come up with themselves. This information is rapidly coming in at times, depending on the type crime that may occur. So our hope is that we're saving, uh, tax dollars, money in investigations. We are allowing an arrest to be made, um, to allow our law enforcement agencies, um, to be the-
Elite force that they are. I'll finish it for you.
The powerful force that they are.
Let me just say this, Mr. Duncan. I appreciate everything you do and everything that your staff does. And, Mr. Mayor, we just got finished talking about how we fund a whole bunch of things. Crime Stoppers receive no money from the city of Fayetteville. I think if it's a proposal to issue out five thousand dollar rewards other than two thousand dollar rewards, even though they surpassed their goal with their, uh, funding this year for their, uh, uh, nonprofit, that we need to give them something if we want them to do more. That would be my proposal. I don't know how many awardees they give out a year, but if you were to multiply that by the three thousand dollars difference that you want to add on to that, then that's the amount that we should give them, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilmember Benevente?
Uh, see, or I don't know if this is a Chief Joyce question or City Manager Hewitt question. Well, I'll just start here. Mr. Hubbard, you guys run a, a, a logistically impressive operation every time y'all do the barbecue. Uh, people get in and out of there very fast. That's just another kudos to you. Um, Chief Joyce, I don't know if this is your question, i- is it correct that ninety-eight percent of crime is solved in Fayetteville? What was the question?
Well, i- i- when you go back and look, especially at our, at our homicides across the city-
Conversion rates on those are great.
They, they have a very high solvability, uh, rate in those cases. But even in all of our other crimes, we rank above the national average, um, for our city. So that's something that is commendable to our detectives, our personnel who are working on a daily basis that we maintain and strive to, to keep that, uh, that level above that national average. And, and to Crime Stoppers, I would also like to submit, you know, we just had an incident last week that was solved uh, thanks to a Crime Stoppers tip for a fatal hit and run that had occurred. And it was truly that information that came in that those traffic officers were able to corroborate and continue their investigation and be able to make an arrest in that case. So again, they, they are very crucial to, uh, not only us, but the other agencies that they represent as well.
Just for homicides? So, so it's ninety-five percent specifically for homicides. I just want to make sure that we're giving accurate information to the citizens of Fayetteville. Uh, and you also said all crime. Um, right, it matters, it matters. Um, I guess the last thing I would recommend, rather than giving a specific dollar amount, and I think this would actually be to the benefit of Crime Stoppers, we match whatever you're able to earn on a given year. Um, so I think that you guys are always growing. I think you guys are always being successful in your fundraising. Rather than giving a static amount, perhaps we can, uh, match whatever you raise.
All right. All right, so thank you, Councilmember Benevente. All right, Councilmember Thompson, you wanna? Yeah, I think we've got to put some direction behind it. That's the goal today. Um, and so-
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, that if the proposal is to raise, uh, the reward from two thousand dollars to five thousand dollars, that we would give them the difference of any additional funds that they need for those awards. So in other words, if you ask for one that wants for five thousand dollars and they want to give two thousand dollars, we'll give them the, the city will give them the remaining three thousand dollars.
All right, there's a motion to do that, and I guess they'll work on the logistics and the legalities of it. But I think the point is on some of your cases that score highest, um, those that, that have the most public interest, I guess, or the most impact, you know, there are some things that impact the public different. And, um, so those are the ones that we're talking about, and we'll, we'll give some criteria to that. But the motion, uh, today is to, is to do that. There's a second by Councilmember Hare. And, uh, we've had discussion. Councilmember Davis, you had your button pushed for discussion? All right, all right, discussion phase. We'll go to Councilmember McNair and Davis. Oh, all right. Councilmember McNair, you had a, had a question?
I, I would like for my colleague to explain, uh, any addition, no funds, that he was speaking of. You said five thousand and any additional funds.
He's saying that to make it to five thousand.
The mayor was going to give five thousand, so we would make the difference. But now that my colleague just asked me a question, what would be more beneficial? For us to match what you raised or to give you the additional three thousand dollars, Mr. Duncan?
The additional on those?
That's what I would think.
The additional, certainly, but we're certainly happy to, to sit down and talk with council or talk with the board, uh, to certainly do what we can to help, because we do want to help. Um, it's a program that works. It's a solid program. And I believe that, uh, I believe that our council here tonight knows that that program is a working program. It has worked for many years, and our intention is for it to continue to work and to continue to assist our city.
I appreciate you, Mr. Hubbard, and we look forward to working with you and for you to come back with some great news.
All right, so-
So the clarification on the motion, Mr. Mayor, is that we will give the Crime Stoppers program the additional three thousand dollars that you asked for to make sure that that program receives five thousand dollars other than the two thousand dollars as they normally do.
For those cases that they, that they score accordingly. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your vote. All right, uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin? She's still on? Councilmember Banks McLaughlin? Okay. All right. All right, uh, who, who hasn't voted? May Pro Tim, what you over there do? All right, all right, motion carries. Thank you. Keep up, keep up the good work. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. We appreciate your, we appreciate your support.
All right, counsel, as we move to five point four, uh, unattended minors curfew. Um, this discussion had took place originally in September of twenty twenty-three. Uh, Mr. Lauren Beimer, actually, play, kind of just give us a recap on, on where we left that discussion.
On their growing youth crime problem, Fayetteville city leaders have come up with this interesting thing that they want to do. They'd like to make all of these young folks under eighteen be in the house during certain hours.
CBS Seventy's Lillian Donahue is digging deeper into this proposal.
I want to attend more graduations than funerals.
Demetria Murphy lost her teenaged cousin just a few years ago.
Not only losing family members, but just knowing the impact that it has on the community as a whole to constantly see so much violence.
In the first six months of the year, Fayetteville police tell us nearly a thousand criminal incidents involve children under eighteen.
The increase in motor vehicle thefts over the past several months, the increase in violent crime across our city.
One of the ways the city may tackle the problem is by curfew.
We can't throw money at this issue. We can't arrest our way out this issue. We need some for real, for real parental buy-in.
The curfew would keep sixteen and seventeen-year-olds off the streets between midnight to five AM during the week and from one AM to five AM on weekends. Anyone younger than sixteen would need to be home from eleven PM to six AM daily.
And that's going to create a bigger divide between law enforcement and young people.
Some city leaders question the logistics of it all and just how effective a curfew would be, and worry-
That the only thing that's going to happen with this ordinance is that poor families, young people are going to end up in a courtroom.
There are some exceptions to the ordinance, like if a minor is accompanied by-
Oh, well, we, we're just talking about the exceptions, so this is twenty twenty-three. So we brought this, uh, the whole purpose of this was to put us in context of where we left this conversation two and a half years ago, all right? Um, and so, as we know, um, the council, after a lot of discussion, uh, wa- wasn't able to reach a consensus, and the conversation stopped at the time. Now, since then, as we picked this back up- Now, since then, as we picked this back up, uh, when that was given, Chief Braden, who was here earlier, uh, at that time said that the numbers of twenty twenty-three in council, we've, we've shared the twenty twenty-three report that he was referring to, was one thousand incidents, uh, in, in the first six month, or in that six-month period that was in the, in, mentioned in the, um, in the clip. So what we say, we'll fast forward to twenty twenty-four. That number has turned to one thousand five hundred and fifty, and in the first three months of twenty twenty-five, it was four hundred and eighty-nine, for a combined total of two thousand thirty-nine incidents in fifteen months. And so I think if there's anything that I think we can agree on, is that that number is going in the wrong direction. And so tonight's conversation is how do we as a community address that? And so we know that there will not be, uh, a single answer that will solve all problems, that all of the problems are not, uh, related to this population, but there is a problem in this demographic that we have to talk about. And what we also know is that the problem has continued to get worse since we've done nothing since that clip. So there was one thing that ended that clip that was very true, that more young people did end up in the courts, but not because of action, but because of inaction. We saw it. The numbers are clear. So now, as we talk through this tonight, uh, the, the options are, or, or some of the considerations are as followed for, for the council to discuss and as our colleagues. You know, I see, uh, so Tony Brown somewhere, where is he at with the hat? All right. And I, and I've, I've gone out and there are a number of nonprofits, uh, and, and community organizations and churches in this city that are doing great work that specifically concentrated on this population. Tonight's conversation is not to impede or to take away from what you do. My hope is that there'll be some framework that comes out of this discussion that will enhance what you do. Right now, without any structure or rules in place, many of you are underutilized or your, or your programs are not as full as you would like for them to be. I would like for every nonprofit or service provider that is in this space to be overworked, which means that people are using your service. So sometimes it takes some action to create those type of responses. And so I want to make sure that we understand the outcomes that we are seeking are very much the same. What we've spent, I asked the city manager to give us a spent-to-date on community safety activities. The total number, and the council has this, is five million nine hundred ninety-six dollars and once, and ninety-six and one dollar. Youth specifically, uh, related programs for youth opportunities, communities, uh, support micro grant, this budget, hundred and thirty thousand. The PAL League, ninety-two thousand. Juvenile restitution program, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Uh, the mental health diversion, one hundred and ten thousand, and youth opportunities, forty-five thousand. So each year, council, we're continuing to fund these things, and I think we continue to do that and to build these programs. But that in and of itself is not giving us the right direction. It is not giving us the end result that we need to have. Those numbers cannot continue fifteen months from now and to be one and a half or one hundred and thirty percent of where it was the last time we talked about it. So out of this tonight, I hope that we talk through this. I hope that this is the beginning of, of, uh, encouraged compliance to maybe now, uh, take those nonprofit agencies and, and those fraternities and sororities and church groups and, and whatever your organization is, that you start to now know that we need you in this community to help us with this problem. That it is that we put some, some things in place that now causes parents to consider other options for what they want to do versus allowing these kids to come out into a situation where Chief Todd or Chief Braden make them a part of our report. I would rather be talking about the budget and how to increase funding to these programs than I am talking about what we're talking about tonight. Now that is where we are. It's a tough conversation to have, but it's a real conversation we've got to have. All right. And so with that, council, I will go, uh, and, and, and again, I'm open to any alternatives that you have in addition to what we're doing. We're already funding nearly six million, and I don't think that, that the council is, is opposed to good ideas that continue to give us the results. But right now, we're not getting those results. There are many that'll tell us won't wo- won't work. Let's concentrate on telling us what will work, because we haven't tried it here. So, and the last thing I'll say is before I go to my colleagues is, uh, nearly seventy percent of cities over two hundred thousand have some form of juvenile unattended ordinance on the books, including Charlotte. It's had it for, for a couple of decades. It did not solve Charlotte's, all of Charlotte's problems, but it did not send them into a state of disrepair like we're trying to say this is. So oftentimes, our conversations get lost in it's a one thing or another, not a both and. And so as we talk about this tonight, I hope that we would be able to reasonably work through it, but understanding our goals are the same. But sometimes it takes a little nudge and some framework that we're not dealing with what we've been dealing with. And council, with that, I, I see Councilmember Benavente. I'll go to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, City Manager Hewitt, I'm not sure if this question is for you or perhaps, um, Mayor Colvin, but when we have special meetings like this, is it our practice and can I expect that I can play videos and that I can direct city staff to, um, present things moving forward after seeing that?
Since I called the meeting, it was a proper...
I'm asking the city manager first, I guess. I guess, you know what? Now I realize city manager is probably the best one to answer. Mr. City Manager, you, you set the agenda, sir, and you are in charge of your staff. I'm trying to understand, did you approve such a video? Mr. Manager, I'm asking the city manager.
Right. I understand what you're saying, but I called, I understand, I understand.
Can he answer the question?
That will have chance to, to apply, but you, but you're asking for a conversation about the special meeting.
No, sir. No, sir. I'm asking about some propaganda you tried to play, yes.
Well, well, listen, sir. Councilmember Benavente, the point is, is that I called a special meeting, I chaired a meeting, and I played the clip.
So moving forward, if I can call for a meeting, city council members can play videos and direct staff to do that?
And you have.
Oh, no, I haven't. But I'm going to ask the city manager Hewitt, is that permissible from now on?
City Manager Hewitt doesn't set the terms of it.
Can you clarify for us, City Manager Hewitt, whether you are indeed or not in charge of the agenda and how things are presented?
Presents the agenda. We approved the agenda.
Okay, wait, I didn't approve a video.
Well, you voted against the agenda. But okay. But do you have a question?
I did for the city manager. I'm asking for him to have an opportunity to speak, please.
Yeah.
The special meeting was called and the items on the special agenda, um, were set by the mayor who set the, the meeting, called the meeting. I was unaware that there was a request by anyone to play that video. Had I been made aware of that, um, I would have had conversations with the council. Um, as you recall, the information I sent to council yesterday, late last night, was saying these are the questions I have received in the lead-up to the meeting, which has a public meeting notes attached to it. And I asked you if you had any additional questions or if you had any information needs to please let me know, and staff will work very carefully to try to get that ready for you today. I was unaware that the video would be played.
Can we make sure that we do some follow-up with city staff so that they understand the, they work for you and not the mayor and that there is a order?
Yeah, but sir, but you're not, you're not speaking germane to what it is. That's a policy conversation that you need to set with the board, sir.
Because you're trying to direct the conversation in a very particular way.
But right now, I'm chairing the meeting, and so if you're speaking to what it is, I'm going to move to the next person. All right.
That's what I'm trying to speak. It's my turn to speak.
All right. Well...
Let me finish my question and I, and then you can speak. I have a question. City Manager Hewitt, can you make sure that we have some semblance of order when it comes to these meetings and the way that staff is directed by the city manager, their actual boss, not by any individual member of council regardless of their title?
All right. Thank you. Councilmember...
Can he answer, please?
Councilman Benavente, Mayor Colvin, and council, we work very hard to make sure that we provide y'all with accurate information. At, at moment, y'all are having a policy discussion and debate, and we will continue to work and will make due diligence in all future meetings that we, um, ask if there are special needs that y'all have, whether it's playing video or not. And had we been, had I'd been, been told that this was in the interest of council, I would have shared it with all of you. Um, but at the moment, that is not something that happened, but it is what it is at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next question I have is about the, uh, community safety activities document. Um, city, uh, uh, Chief Joyce, is pa- how many, how many young people, uh, go through PAL for that forty-eight thousand dollars?
We host summer camps, uh, of course, as we're coming up on that. So, uh, you're looking at at least a dozen children in there, but you also have to look at the programs throughout the year, whether that's through the boxing program or other programs that they're running, which can be a number of children throughout the entire year. So it not only funds them throughout that entire year, but also our summer camp as well.
And you said about a dozen in the boxing camp and then more in the summer camp?
Well, at least a dozen probably during the summer camp with those children, and they do a, a variety of activities over the week in which they are there, but it also takes care of the, the other, uh, activities throughout the entire calendar year.
So let's say fifty maybe for that forty-eight thousand. The juvenile restitution program, is that something that you are familiar with, how that ninety-two thousand dollars is spent, or is that a city manager question?
I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how all of those dollars are spent, um, but through, through that, we have, uh, an individual who is at the DA's office who works hand-in-hand when that's part of the salary for that as well.
You said the district attorney's office?
Yes, sir.
And, and how is it that they use that money?
I think part of it is salary as well, but I, I'd be glad to get back to you on the remainder of those as well.
So that juvenile restitution program is salary for a district attorney?
It, it is not a district attorney. It is, it is an employee through that. It covers part of their salary.
And then the ECD, maybe this is Mr. Colley here or somebody who can speak to the ECD Youth Opportunities, forty-five thousand dollars? And the reason I'm asking is because, you know, Mr. Mayor, you can't say that six million dollars is being spent on our youth when I'm totaling here.
That's not what I said, sir. I said community safety activities. It's the title of it.
Well, and, and so I want to make sure that we're spending, um, reasonable amount on our youth, if that's the target that we're hoping to, to work on, sir. So I just want to know, Youth Opportunities, ECD, forty-five thousand, what is that doing
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Brooke Redding, uh, senior assistant to the city manager. So I'm, I'm looking off of my phone because I'm, I'm pulling up ECD's information, but that, those funding or that funding is specifically going to the Two-Six Project, Roots Mentoring, uh, J Six, Youth Foundation, and GLOF.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of organizations sharing forty-five thousand dollars. I feel like we can do a lot better than that. Um, City Manager Hewitt, you heard, um, this number given that we went from a thousand incidences to over two thousand incidences of juveniles. When Chief Braden, um, presented this information a year and a half ago, two years ago, he categorized those incidences over when they occurred. And my big takeaway, and I wanted to know if you have today's information, uh, like I requested via email, that the vast majority happened after school and not necessarily after nine.
Chief Joyce?
And a part of the, the juvenile restitution as well, uh, of course, that is a grant through JCPC.
Okay.
Um, so also not only for the salary of that person, but also court-ordered restitution is paid through that as well.
So basically, youth won't get the benefit of that until they get basically put into the system?
At the conclusion of what has, uh, placed them in that, in that situation, yes, sir.
Where they've been charged with something at that point. It's, it's not really a preventative thing. It's sort of an aftercare matter. That's good to know, because I, I think that that matters to our discussion about preemptive issues. Um, but do you also have data from the same kind of data that Chief Braden had showed us before where we're plotting when these juvenile incidences are occurring? Because we can't talk about two thousand incidences and say that they're all happening after nine o'clock when we're trying to talk about this curfew. Is it true that they're still happening right after school for the vast majority of the time?
And that was some information that was shared today, uh, through council request. Uh, so you should have that information now that we'll be able to provide that.
It's in here?
No, sir.
Where is it?
It was in an email that was sent today, referenced, uh, some of the requests that were made, uh, towards the end of last week.
When you, when you put it together, though, can you recall that it was not actually after nine o'clock that these incidences were happening?
As you look at, at the times of the incidents, there were variations, whether it was day of the week, hour of the day in which they were occurring, um, not predominantly in, in one particular timeframe or not.
And city attorney, um, I reached out to you about sort of the legal framework and my concerns with some of the mayor's, um, report. What is that? The, 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 from the mayor's office letter that he put out? In that letter, he said that he was going to, uh, try and punish parents for...
What? That's not what it's in the...
Well, let's, I'll read it verbatim. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let me make, make sure I, uh, quote it correctly. If someone else pulls it up faster than me, feel free to...
Well, look, while you're doing that, I need to go. You have several councils that are...
Well, I think we can get to the straight to the point.
So I'll circle back.
I, I won't say punish then, as I'm pulling up the information. City Attorney can still answer the question. Can you tell me any issues potentially, uh, withholding parents culpable for the actions of their children if they do not know that their child has left the home?
Are you speaking about under a state of emergency or are you talking about an ordinance?
Whatever Mitch has told you he's going to try and do tonight. In his, in his report, he said stiff penalties for parental non-compliance.
Gotcha, Mario. All right. All right.
I'm reading it, I'm reading it from here. Stiff penalties for parental non-compliance.
All right.
Can you, can, can you tell me, uh, exactly the legal limitations of someone being held culpable when they're not aware that their child has left the home?
Councilman Benavente, I would prefer not to opine on a hypothetical. I don't have any proposal in front of me. There's no proposed ordinance or, um, restrictions pursuant to a state of emergency that I'm considering. So until council directs me, um, as to what that would look like, I would like to reserve my comment on that.
So you're saying that we can't necessarily take action on a curfew tonight until you've actually put something on paper for us to actually review?
No, sir. That's not what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm trying to understand the, I'm trying to compare those two things then.
You, you've had, you've had a cheerful. I do need to move on to Councilmember Hair.
I'll take a second round later. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll put your light on. We'll circle back. All right.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. Before I go forward, once again, I want to at least pull on the heart of councils and, and good decency that we continue to, or at least move forward to respect one another and respect one another's opinions tonight as we talk about these very important items. What I wanted to share, uh, is, is not a, a for or against, but I wanted to share some opinions and emails and thoughts that I received from several of my, uh, constituents. I, normally when I'm faced with questions that face the citizens, I like to talk to the citizens and find out just what their opinions are. So I sent emails out hundreds across the city. Even last week, I sat down in between about thirty-five people at one of my community watch groups, and I called it a front and center conversation, and it, and I discussed with them curfews and what they thought. Several of these, uh, residents that were there, uh, council, were husbands and wives that had children that were teenagers that are presently in school in that conversation. And I talked to them about curfews, not knowing exactly what the full process would be tonight, which we ha- have, there's no decision been made, but just what they thought, uh, of which we have, there's no decision been made, but just what they thought of curf, of curfews. And this one gentleman spoke that has a couple of teenagers and one is getting ready to graduate. And he said, "Well, Councilman Hair, I'll tell you this. I don't know if the curfew is the answer, but I'll tell you that we need to do something and that I could support curfew as a, as one of the tools within the toolbox that our police and law enforcement use." Not saying, and this is, this gentleman, I was hoping he would be here tonight, not saying that this is a win for all or answer for all, but it would be an additional tool that could be used and put in the toolbox as we are trying to move forward to curb crime. I received several emails, some in favor, some not in favor. The ones that were in favor said, "If there was a way that we could pour inside of some of our moms and dads to put more input into their children, that would help us a lot too." God knows, I understood that. As a tender aged young man of 67 years old, I remember the days when my mom or my dad said, "Son, you'd be home by such a, such a time, and you'd be in this place by such a time." And back in those days, parents were allowed to spank. Well, somebody, I had a conversation with somebody earlier today. They said, "Whoop." I'm not sure how you spell the word "whoop," but I had a whole lot of them growing up as a boy, if I got out of order. So as we move forward this evening to talk about curfew, and as we move forward and trying to implement some areas that can help improve, let us please remember that not one thing, not one item, even, even the one-on-one crimes that, other crimes that we deal with, not just a police officer, not just the institution of improved technology that we spoke of, but it's going to be all of that working together. And that's one of the things that I wanted to share. If we as a community could come together more in helping one another with our children, I used to remember in growing up, if I did something wrong by the time I got home, my parents already knew. Because you hear this thing always, this little, they, it's almost like it's a cliche that it takes a village. I always hear that, but really it does. And the partnerships that we have, we have a couple of partnerships that we give money to right now that, that do after-school tutoring or after-school mentoring that we have to, the, the, the founders of these organizations are saying, "Gosh, we need so many more people because we don't have enough of folk that are coming in to utilize." So we really need to do better overall in supporting to curb crime. And 90% of those that I spoke to were in favor of some form of a curfew with whatever the conditions may be. And this was from residents that I spoke with. And I just wanted to share some of what I heard from some of my constituents. Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember McNair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say that this is a very touchy subject for me and very serious. When I think about the curfew, I think about all the individuals that are dying in District 7, which isn't the topic tonight. If I had to switch gears, I would switch it to that topic. But however, let's move along. So I want to discuss the ordinance that the county has in place, how we can benefit from that particular ordinance. And then also, I think someone brought it up, what sort of penalty will parents face if their kids are out past 9:00 PM? I have tons of questions here. I actually hosted a WIDU radio show this morning just to get and feel the opinion of, of the public, which matters a lot to me. Some people say it shouldn't, but I say it should. However, they would like to have some of these questions answered before we impose a curfew upon the community and also deal with the understaffing of our policing and also the, another question that came about is what brought this curfew up in the first place? They were asking me those questions. And so
Yeah.
we need to answer a lot of questions here tonight. And we do have some recommendations from our community as well that could assist with supporting our young children. Our parents need support. I come from a background where, you know, it was a little different from a lot of folk that said we, that says we need a curfew. My background was different. If I wanted to leave the house, I left the house.
Oh, really?
While my parents were asleep. Yes, I did.
Shame on you, Bren.
Well, it's the truth. I left the house.
All right.
But I did come back.
All right. So I think Madam Attorney's there. I remember captioning about the county's ordinance. It doesn't apply to municipalities. You want to speak to that a little bit?
Yes, sir, Mayor Kovan. The county's ordinance only applies in the unincorporated areas of the county, which would be those that are not in the city.
Yeah, so the county's ordinance that they've had on the, they have a curfew that's been on the books for several years, but it is, it is in the unincorporated area. So areas outside of the nine municipalities. So not, and the municipalities have to pass their own since they have their own governing board. And I remember that, that came up before. All right, so go to...
So we don't benefit from that at all?
Well, you can't. You know, the statute doesn't allow them to regulate what goes on within the city.
Okay.
Yeah. So, all right. Councilmember Mahandros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the video we played earlier, when we talked about this in September of '23, the video said the curfew was talking about 11:00 PM. This today, or what we saw leading up to this meeting was 9:00 PM. When did that change?
So, so the basis of the meeting that I called
Yes, sir.
was, which had recommendations to be discussed tonight. So it, it originally had nine, but that's, that was the purpose of having this conversation, that it, it wasn't at nine. What we discussed back then was 11:00 and a consensus couldn't be reached. So, you know, Charlotte, which has, has an ordinance similar to it that, that we've been reading over that was just passed out, has a variation. So that, that was just the recommended time. So it could be 10:00 and something like that.
Thank you, sir. Because back in 2023, I had some reservations and concerns. I think I shared some of my history when I was that age. I think Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin and myself are the only ones that have children that soon, well, immediately will be affected by this, by a curfew if we were to do that. But one of the main questions I had back in '23, which I don't think ever was answered, was, so we pass a curfew, doesn't matter if it's 11:00, 12:00, 9:00, whatever time we, we agree on. An officer with FPD sees a group of kids, two, two, three, four kids, whatever it is. They're in the curfew age or younger than the curfew age. So they, they have those kids. They're not arrested. They're detained or they're not detained. They're, they're in the custody for temporary custody of the officer. What happens to those childrens?
Well, what I would say is 2,039 times they've come into that situation. So it's happening anyway. So I'm, I'm not sure what happens when, I guess it depends on the, the level of what they're being confronted about.
Sure. So it happens the 2,000 times you speak of is because they're either caught doing something that's a crime or there's readable or tickable suspicion for them to do, for them to be stopped, right? Whereas a curfew, just by them being outdoors and existing, puts them in that. That, that's, that's the difference. So you're going from 2,000 to tens of thousands.
Well, well, not, you know, can't necessarily say that because some of the 2,000 could be deterred by, by rules and by encouraging them to go to programs that we talked about earlier.
Well, and, and I'm glad you brought that up.
So it's a hypothetical.
That, that's the, that's the point is I, I would prefer to focus on having more programs. We haven't really discussed anything about, you know, it's the old ad, is the devil's, you know, idle hands is the devil's workshop. Like, we're not giving them any positive programs to do. I remember a lot of us my age and even some younger, there was YMCA programs, there was Parks and Rec programs, there was different positive alternatives that we're just not discussing those alternatives.
Well, what's stopping you? Put, put it in formal motion. Small for that. Let, let us remember, let us remember the beginning of the meeting. Talked about what we need to do to, for everyone to enjoy it, but Councilmember Mahandros, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'll be prepared to put in a motion. I can do it now or after further discussion.
Support that. So, so let me move to Councilmember Benevente and then Davis. No, I'm sorry, Davis and then Benevente. That was his second. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, Davis first time, and then Benevente. And Thompson.
Who's next? Me? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we're all sitting here talking about the curfew, I think all of us up here can say that we all want programs. We all want alternatives. We all want to make things better for our children. But that takes time and that takes capacity. And right now, the situation that we're in, we don't have six months to wait down the road. So what I keep hearing up here is people saying, "When I was young, when I was young, four boys grew up in my house. I didn't sleep for 10 years because they were going out, they were getting back in. I'd wake up in the morning and have to count cars."
I know you're tired.
So I, yeah, I'm tired. I understand it. But even 10 years ago, when they were sneaking out, they weren't dealing with what these children are dealing with right now. These kids are going to a rec center and somebody got shot and killed at our rec center. And we've got to do something. And that is the things that we can say, we can do this, we can do that. You know, I say it all the time, y'all, nobody's coming. Nobody's coming. We are here and we have to figure this out. Councilmember Mahandros, Councilmember McNair? I went out, I'd go head off to East Carolina at 2:00 in the morning, but there wasn't somebody at a stoplight with a gun or a fight if you came into the wrong place. And that is what we have to realize. Ma'am, I'm sorry. I see your sign and I respect it. But as a mom, I said this in 2020, I said it in 2023.
Yeah, the home address, okay.
I'm sorry. I saw it in 2023. As a mom, I cannot think of a 13-year-old that can be out. And we are in a different world. So that's all I have to say, and I will go on to the next person.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Davis and then Thompson, and then we'll be on the second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll, I'll just, I'll share this. I'll wait till the audience gets quiet, I guess. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I personally, if you would have asked me a month ago, would I vote for a curfew? I would have told you no. But it's when I got a phone call about 11:00 o'clock at night from one of my close friends who told me that one of my other close friend's granddaughter was shot in District 7 at the carnival. And my first response was not was, I had a friend, but what could I do as a council member? What, what do we have in place now that can help? And so when I got the phone call, it hit home. It hit differently. Because I have nieces, I have nephew, and I have cousins who are teens. And so if you would have asked me a month ago, I would have told you no. But as of today, I don't think this is the, the, the top-notch thing that we could do. But it's a tool, as we use tools and other things that we do, use it, and then put some stuff with it so that we can have a better outcome. So I'm not saying that I'm using this as a political tool, but that story hit home for me. And it wasn't just any phone call, but it was a phone call because it was a personal friend who granddaughter was shot, who was just trying to have a good time at a carnival. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I'll wait for the vote, to vote. I'm not sure who's making the motion.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have like 12 questions, but I'm just going to cut it down to about three. Because I want, I want everybody to understand that if nothing changes, nothing changes. If nothing changes things, that means that you're acceptable with the homicides that we've had in the first quarter of this year. And that means that you're unacceptable in my eyes. Because where I'm sitting, I cannot tolerate that. So we're going to do something, and we're going to do it tonight. As we pass around this ordinance, Mr. Mayor from Charlotte, I think it's a great ordinance. I would just change one thing. I would appreciate if we can come to a consensus where the curfew changes from 9:00 to 10:00. I think that's fair because you have individuals going to and fro that are under the age of 16 that needs to get home safely prior to 10:00. Second, I would change the title of this ordinance. I think we should call it the City Youth Protection Ordinance. Sometimes the word "curfew" puts a bad taste in somebody's mouth. But here are some, some tips that I would like to just relay to my colleagues and hopefully have a brief discussion. Some of the things that I think that we can do right now. And I call this a call to action, Mr. Mayor. We need to get everybody involved. This is not just a city council's decision. This is a city decision. We need to get all of our mentors, all of our pastors, all of our community leaders, all of our nonprofits, everybody involved to help us with this youth crime. I heard somewhere that if, there's a church on every corner in the city of Fayetteville. If every church just took three or four blocks and adopted a child and changed somebody's life, that could change the atmosphere of this entire city, Mr. Mayor. These are the type of things that we need, where we need to get everybody involved, not just look at council and say, "Council did this." No, the city needs to do it. Together, united, we stand. That's the way we look forward. But, Mr. Mayor, here are some things that I talked to, a lot of people don't know that. I have a first cousin that's a mayor in Flint, Michigan, and we converse all the time. And we talk quite a bit for him to give me some advice. Two, three things I would like to talk about. Have we ever talked about a junior mayor of the city?
I don't believe so.
Can we get a youth to be a junior mayor of the city? To give him a nonprofit, to connect with other youth that can probably move to tell them that, "Look, if you're doing this, you could be the junior mayor of the city. You can make policy when it comes to youth. You can address the youth at the schools. You can collaborate with city council. You can come to our meetings. You can get a chair on a diocese right next to Mr. Mayor. You can hold the meeting. Give our youth confidence in what they can do to better their atmosphere." Number two, I think we had this in Atlanta or either in Charlotte. How can we sponsor a midnight basketball game at one of the rec centers with police protection? There's, there's recreation cities, there's recreation centers in the city of Philadelphia that run all night long, from 12:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, with police presence just to run a tournament, to get the youth off the streets? We got a place where you can go. You can play basketball, you can get something to eat, and you can feel protected. Three, there used to be a time when you went to a recreation, recreation center, you had to turn in your ID. I don't know where the people in Parks and Recs are, but if we had our youth going to these recreation centers, when they sign in, they need to turn in their ID. When they leave, they pick up their ID. That way, if something happens, we know who you are because we got your ID. I don't know where that process went, but that's something that we could bring back. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem talking about things back in the day, well, I can honor revert back in the day. And when I was coming up, we had old heads and we had young boys. I'm, I'm going to break it down to you in case you didn't know.
You sound a little old school there.
You had some who were in gangs that was under the age of 16. You had some that was in gangs that was in their 20s, 30s, and 40s. You had the old heads and you had the young boys. The old heads would, I keep using that. Let's go back. The older people would not let the younger people do anything unless they got the older people's permission. Y'all feel me? Y'all know, y'all looking at me strange. Let me put it to you like this. If you was a young boy, you couldn't do anything unless an old head gave you permission. We need to take back our streets. I have had too many people... I have had too many people in the city say that I am afraid of the kids in my own neighborhood. The old neighborhood that you live in, they won't call the cops because of repercussions. Let's get those old heads back in the communities, let them walk the streets of the communities, let them take back their communities, and put respect back in their communities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I like that, we're coming with solutions, ideas. Uh, all right, um, I'll go, yeah, I'll, I'll circle back to you, I've got, uh, got two more lights for the second round, which is Benevente, McNair, then I'll come back to you. Uh, Councilmember McNair.
So, can, can you, um, speak to how we're supposed to include these additional plans and ideas to assist along with the curfew? Um, I, I like to read one that one of my, um, one of our constituents sent to me, um, they suggest that the city provide scholarships to parents to help pay for, um, summer workshops and camps.
Okay, all right.
So is that something that we can consider?
Yes, I mean, I think, look, what I've heard tonight has been a number of ideas from, uh, Councilmember Honduras's idea, which was, I was taking notes over here, you know, what, what was, what was your initial one? Was to, uh, but, task force, uh, no, that wasn't what you said. All right, all right, but, uh, you know, something to expand, um, a kind of a, of a merril version of a junior mayor for youth. You know, we've got a great youth council, won national awards, so maybe, maybe there's some process to that, but I like that, what Councilmember, uh, Thompson said, rec centers expanding the time, uh, that, that, that activity is available, but making it secure and safe, so that if a mom says, "I want to leave my baby with you at this rec center," she needs to know he's safe. You know, again, some of the things that we've talked about earlier today are setting, paving the pathway for that. You know, we just had an issue at a rec center involving basketball. That's not a place that now, without some affirmative, bold action, that a mom is gonna wanna say, "I wanna leave my child there overnight."
Okay.
But, I like that, because you're coming up with ideas, and so, what you would do, Councilmember McNair, is to add whatever kind of ideas you have, and we can take action on it.
Okay, um.
She's still speaking, I'm coming.
So, so with that being said, the workshops would include, um, education from our police department, um, talking with our parents and our, our children, and letting them know, um, what to expect if, um, they would, was to break the, uh, the ordinance?
Okay, gotcha, all right, thank you. I'll, I'll come back if there's anything else, all right. Uh, Councilmember Benevente, and, uh, I'm going to.
Thank you, Mr. Benevente, uh, Mr. Mayor. The only time I'm hearing applause is for ideas other than the curfew, and whether it's the twenty-four-hour rec center, whether it's, um, direct payments for childcare assistance or summer programming, we don't actually have to harm people to get them help. And that's what a curfew would ultimately do. You're talking about charging juveniles with a class-two misdemeanor and potentially their parents with a class-one misdemeanor, and we do not have to do the hurting to go straight to the helping. When you talk about the incident at College Lakes Rec Center, they were adults, and it was during the day. When you talk about the incident at the carnival, it was before nine AM, and I don't think they actually know if the perpetrator was a juvenile or not. Same thing when it comes to the dog with testable. Sir, if, I'm looking at the report, if, and I need, uh, Chief Joyce, so he can clarify if he'd like to, um, but the point is, a curfew would not have stopped any single one of the horrible things that y'all mentioned, not a single one. And if that is not recognized, then you guys are proving that it doesn't really matter the efficacy of the program, you guys just want a curfew, in my opinion, for political purposes at this point. But, Mr. Joyce, I need to ask you.
You're doing enough of that for everybody.
That, that's, that's the only logical reason at this point, sir, because we had ACLU give us the data, anywhere a curfew has been implemented, it has not had the impact of reducing juvenile crime or gun violence, it hasn't. So if you think it's gonna be different here, even with the examples that have occurred so far in this city, not, none of them, not a single one of the ones that you mentioned would have hap, would have had been impacted by a curfew. Now, uh, Chief Joyce, when Chief Braden was here, uh, two and a half years ago, a year and a half ago on this topic, he talked about the process that occurred if you were to stop a juvenile, whenever the curfew is, if it's nine PM, ten PM, whether it's a thirteen-year-old or an eighteen-year-old. Can you walk us through the actual process of what would occur? Because I believe Mr. Honduras was getting to a point that the mayor unfortunately derailed, that what happens to that young person if it's late at night and the parent does not answer the phone?
Of course, you know, you kind of referenced it, we're gonna try and get ahold of a parent or guardian, or a responsible adult in which they may reside with, um, but when one unable to make contact with those persons, um, we're gonna try to work to contact the Department of Social Services, and having to make a determination if they will be able to respond or not, um, to our location, as we're still with the juvenile.
And do you recall at all what Chief Braden's issues were with that sequence of events when he'd reached out to juvenile, I mean, to, uh, DSS and Juvenile Justice?
I believe during one of the incidents he referenced, uh, during that presentation, uh, was in fact a homicide investigation, um, uh, between a man and woman, and the individual, the male had fled from the home, and they were, there were at least two children in the home, and they were working, trying to get someone to come out for the children, and no one responded that evening.
And, and when you say "no one," are you talking about DSS?
Yes, sir.
So, I think, I read it in the paper that, um, Mayor Colvin doesn't want the city of Fayetteville to be babysitters for these juveniles.
Mario, let me quote myself, if you don't mind.
But in effect, what would you be doing if DSS won't pick them up and their parents won't be picking up, you'd be babysitting these juveniles, is that correct?
We would continue to try and exhaust all measures of contacting someone, in hopes that eventually we will be able to make contact for placement of the juvenile.
Right, and so, when I think about all of the great things that y'all are talking about, having young people, um, participate in, I think, Mayor, you said it when you kind of opened up this discussion, that, I mean, it was coded language, I mean, you kept saying that you wanted to encourage compliance, that, um, you know, you wanted to overwork our service providers, but you're talking about getting young people potentially charged and having to go before a judge to then be ordered to do these things. That's one way to do it. I'm suggesting, we instead of hitting them with the stick, a child who's probably already in a vulnerable situation, who's a part of a family that's already struggling, that we don't necessarily try and find them or put them, or charges on both of them, we just skip straight to the part that everyone was applauding about, the support, the help, the care, the, uh, the opportunities, let's go straight there. I haven't heard a single argument from anybody on this dius that actually says a curfew would have the outcomes that you are, we all agree on. We want fewer gun incidents of gun violence, we want fewer incidences of juvenile, uh, delinquency. A curfew would not actually affect that. It's all of the other things we're discussing. Let's make sure that we have a card system going into our rec centers, let's make sure we spend more money to have more programming and, and make it cheaper for people to go there. If you want to declare a state of emergency so bad, let's have that happen, and then we say, "All of the buses from the rest of the summer will take children to the rec centers to and fro, the shuttles even, so that transportation doesn't become an issue." There's all these wonderful things that we could be doing, but for some reason, you guys want to scapegoat young people, you want to scapegoat parents who are already struggling. They don't want their kids out after nine, if they could do better, they would.
Thank you, Councilmember, and, uh, since, since, since you, since you like to quote me, uh, and gaslight, I, I'll, I'll, I'll speak for myself just to clarify it. All of these things, not once did we start this conversation by saying that we were not open to it. Five point nine million dollars and counting is for community safety activities. No one in this, on this dius, or in this audience believes that this particular population is responsible for everything. But that same speech did exactly what you're saying you're trying to prevent. It increased the number of people who talked to Captain, to Chief Joyce, and to Chief Braden by one hundred and thirty percent because of that same speech that you gave then, and you're back to the same stuff now. So you cannot get different results by doing the same thing. So it's easy to say what won't work, so that's why I'm opening the tent up to say, "We will try this plus that." So everything that we're saying, so since you wanted to quote me, I'm, I'm clarifying it for you. Everything that I said was that we are not their babysitters, because we need a partnership with the parents. Okay, we're trying to encourage compliance. Now, the city attorney has not even presented an audience attorney, so you know better than the stuff you're talking about to assume or to say that this is gonna be a misdemeanor charge, because she hasn't told us that, because we haven't gotten that far. So she told you that she was not gonna participate in hypothetical conversation, but you want to gaslight the audience and get applause. So if anybody's campaigning, it's you. All right, so let me go to Councilmember Honduras, go to Councilmember Honduras, uh, Green, I'm sorry, Councilmember Green, Honduras.
Davis. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a similar experience, um, as Councilmember Hare. Um, I probably was not a big proponent for curfews, and still am not a hundred percent convinced, um, either one way or the other, for a lot of the reasons that we're all hearing here. I see both sides to this coin, and that's where I'm at. Um, but I did have probably ninety-eight percent of the people who contacted me over the last week and over the weekend are in favor of a curfew. So, I've had that similar experience as Councilmember Hare had. But, one of the comments that was made to me was that, um, we had not enacted anything that we had discussed in this realm, and I do, and I do believe that is true, we are slow to make things happen. I do believe, however, if, um, the city manager would confirm, or whatever the case is, have we hired an office of community safety director?
Yes, they start in June.
Okay, so that was one of the things I kept hearing in conversations, is that we had not, um, done that. I, I will admit, it was a lot slower process than I would have liked, I came on board with that very early on, when I came on council, and it has taken too long, and, um, I'm very happy that that has been filled, and I hope they can hit the ground running. Um, whatever we decide to do this evening, I truly hope that we can continue this conversation, because this is what we have needed from, for years. We, we need more input from the community, we, we do not sit up here believing that we have all the answers. At least, I can speak for myself, I do not have all the answers. I do not pretend to have all the answers. I was also not in favor of ShotSpotter. I did vote for it, because I listened to what the professionals said, and it was also an opportunity to fund it, we had the funding for one more year, and I went with it. I'm happy with my decision that I went with it, I do believe that it has value, and if it does nothing but make twenty-five people in this city feel more protected and safer in their homes, then that is our goal, we want everyone in the community to feel safe. So, if we could possibly approach this in the same way we did the ShotSpotter sound thinking, could we look at the idea of, I do love the youth protection verbiage, um, Councilmember Thompson, could we possibly look at this in the interim as a pilot-type program, so that we are not binding ourselves to something that, three months from now, we do not like the outcome of? And would that not be somewhat of a compromise for us all? We're taking an action, we're doing something tonight, we're doing something proactive, we're a little reactive, because that's just the way human nature is. But we could be more proactive, um, to do something like that, rather than leave here tonight with nothing accomplished. I would truly like to leave here tonight, so that we felt that the council and the citizens of Fayetteville have had some say-so and some input. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, not yet, let's go. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Honduras, and then Thompson and Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of good, um, questions and concerns and ideas from, from my colleagues. Uh, one thing, Mr. Mayor, you and I and some of the other, uh, colleagues on council talked about was a task force of sorts. Um, Senator Applewhite was here, I'm sure she had a packed schedule, had to go, we, uh, heard from our partners at Crime Stopper, there's a lot of members of the Fayetteville, uh, Police Foundation here, um, would love to try to, um, somehow engage our partners from the county, Juvenile Justice, Sheriff's Department, DA, Cumberland County Schools, DSS, the hospital, mental health, they're all, um, should be part of this conversation, um, to try to wrap that all up in a, in a, in a nice ribbon, um, because we don't know what bandwidth and capacity staff has, so I would move that we direct our CAO, the Attorney's Office, and our CMO, the Manager's Office, to develop a strategy deliverable next week, on the twelfth, at our council meeting, um, to implement, whether that's with or without a curfew, including but not limited to wraparound services with a plan, once, uh, our FPD, once our officers engage youthful residents.
All right, Councilmember Honduras does a motion to, uh, include all of what you're saying, which is basically to delay action on the curfew, but ask staff to come back, is that what you're saying? Repeat that. And that, yeah, which means that they gotta come back with the options before you make a decision. Yeah, yeah, I got you.
I mentioned the task force, but that, the motion doesn't really have anything to do with that. The motion's directing our Attorney's Office and our Manager's Office to come up with a strategy, whether that includes a curfew or not, um, which includes, um, wraparound services.
So there's a delay of, of that to come back with answers?
But, but it was for next Monday.
Yeah, I got you, all right, well, that's, uh, it's, it's motion, second it, all right, um, and with discussion that, uh, we'll open, we'll, we'll open up to discussion go with, uh, Councilmember Benevente.
Measure twice, cut once. We don't need to put on a show that we did something tonight if we don't even know what we're actually doing. We've got to have specifics. Some people are saying thirteen years old, some people are saying seventeen and eighteen years old, some people are saying nine-thirty, some people, or nine o'clock, some people are saying ten PM. We do not have the specifics, there's no reason to say that we're gonna have a curfew just so that the press can, you know, validate.
You talk a lot about the press.
Well, sir, I don't understand why else you would force things, why you would force things without detail. We are so diligent about anything and everything else, we measure twice, we cut once, we get city staff to put things on paper, and once the actual details, every single devil in them, are reviewed, we make a decision. It's not something that we typically do unless there's an ulterior motive. So I'm asking today that we work with our partners, who are gonna be necessary to this process according to the chief of police, the past and the present, that these young people who get ensnared in such a curfew would have to go somewhere. We don't have the details around, except we know that a violation of the curfew, no matter what, is a kind of misdemeanor, and, 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 and so, we need those details about what sort of punishments that the people of Fayetteville are going to be presented with. There's nothing that we need to be doing tonight necessarily, other than saying that we want to do something, we want to have the partners in play, and that is why I'm willing to have that discussion. There's some Parks and Rec stuff that I think we all agree on, some card, uh, system, I think that there's some great things that Councilmember McNair said about direct payments to families who need assistance with childcare and summer programming, I want to give that ten million dollars today if I could, because that's actually what's gonna keep our young people from wanting to pick up a gun or wanting to do violence to one another, is when they actually get services, not when they get charges, when they actually get help before they get hurt.
Got you, all right, thank you. All right, so, um, Councilmember, uh, Davis and Thompson, I know you had your light pressed prior to, is this related to the discussion on this motion? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Are you talking about neither?
Yeah, either, either one of you, because you had your light prior to.
I, I did, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to clarify some things. There's no need for you to come back, there's no need for you to come back with details if there is no curfew, because then you're just wasting your time. Uh, let me finish talking, thank you very much. Uh, I think it's necessary for us to impose everything that we talked about, and if staff wants to come back and give us the details by the twelfth, that's fine, but what we have here in this Charlotte, uh, uh, proposal is something that we can mirror to move forward with, so that we know what we're talking about, and that's something that everybody can agree on, even the wraparound services with the county, that I can agree on, but we have to come up with something tangible, so we're not putting this on and on and on again. So when we come back on the twelfth, we have something definite that we can vote on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember, uh, Davis, you've been waiting, Pat, is it? Councilmember Davis, you've been waiting, patience, discussion on this? All right. Who we have? Councilmember Hare?
Well, Mayor, before I even go forward, can we just go ahead and get this motion-
Yeah. Let's dispose of this.
Out of the, um-
All right. So most of my counsel, Mahondros, seconded by Benavente to come back with more information as he described. Yeah. All right. Look to you for your votes on this motion. Yes, ma'am.
What the penalties are going to be?
This is no curfew, this is the staff come back, so, so I guess, so-
He mentioned the penalties.
Yeah, he, he mentioned a lot in there. Go, go ahead, Councilmember Hondros.
I think he mentioned the penalties, we need clarity on that.
Mentioned the what, ma'am?
The penalties.
Yeah, so this is, we, we typically ask staff, who are the professionals that are going to implement whatever it is we do, whether it's a curfew or, or anything else, they're the professionals that have to execute it. So what the motion is, is asking them for a strategy, which could include a, a curfew or not, depending on what the attorney, the manager, I'm sure the manager will talk to the police chief, and anyone else. But it would include all the wraparound services, and it would include, to your point, Councilmember McNair, what penalties or infractions may incur if a curfew is, is violated.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hondros. All right. So council, we'll look to you for votes on this motion, it, Councilmember Hondros and Benavente. Councilmember Banks, McGlaughlin?
Bring it.
All right. Motion fails seven to, who didn't vote? Okay. Motion fails, uh, seven to three. All right. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that we move forward with our youth safety protection program by using the example that we, everyone has in front of them, the Charlotte ordinance, to answer a lot of those questions that some of our council members asked, they're all in Section 15, especially when it came to the, how do you enforce it? That is also in the penalties in Section 15, 157. I think we can use that to emulate what we're trying to do here in the city of Fayetteville. Mr. Mayor, I did receive a text message that I would now like to change it from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock. Being that football season's about to start, and when they come out of football, the games aren't over until after 10 o'clock. So to leave, alleviate any ambiguity, let's just mirror the exact proposal that they have in their Article VII Youth Protection Program.
All right. All right. So the motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Councilmember Davis. All right. Discussion on, uh, discussion on the motion, I'll go to Councilmember Benavente, and then Hare.
So just to clarify, Mr. Thompson, you want to do verbatim what's on these four sheets of paper?
Correct. From Article VII of the Youth Protection Program from Charlotte, North Carolina Code of Ordinances.
And when did you receive this?
I received it, I asked for it last week, I believe.
And you've reviewed it in that time?
I reviewed this one and the one from the county. I think city clerk, for what you guys, the one from the county.
But you're, so, just to clarify, I don't know if this is a city clerk question, is this something that was sent out to everybody a week ago?
I got this on my-
No, I'm sorry, I'm asking a city clerk question.
Well, you asked-
I know, and you answered. And so now, city clerk, has this been something that was presented to city council members at any point before this, it was handed just now?
Councilmember Benavente, I was not the one that provided the Charlotte ordinance. I'm not sure if another staff member did, but I did provide the county ordinance to everyone, yes.
So it sounds like everyone in this room, other than Mr. Thompson, got this about 20 minutes ago, and we're about to impose this ordinance on the city of Fayetteville without having really gone over any of the details for more than 20 minutes. I just think that that's noteworthy.
2023.
I'm sorry, sir.
Mayor, let him finish, let him finish, let him finish, Mr. Mayor.
And, you know, I think that, so far, if approving that, that, that motion would not answer any of the things I feel like there is actual consensus on from the majority, from everyone on council, which is the investment in what will actually save our youth. So, Mr. Thompson, if you would make an amendment to your motion that includes, very specifically, and this is your ideas, the late-night access to the rec centers, transportation for families to be able to access those rec centers, using fast or whatever other means, dollars, dollars, real dollars, whatever we can, we can implement this, this summer, to assist struggling families with childcare as well as summer programming. If we can do those three things, I think we can counteract the harms that will come from a, from a curfew alone.
All right. Criminalization curfew.
Yes, sir, and then we got to call for a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. Some I'll agree to, some I won't agree to. I like my motion, but what I will add to my motion is that we can probably come up with a program to have a junior city mayor. I would like to come up with a program where we can have that all-night basketball thing with police protection at least two or three times during the summer with free transportation. I would like to add to that program how we can implement a program for all of our youth to turn in their ID cards when it comes to rec centers. And if there is a way that we can give parents childcare provisions that you ask for within our budget, I agree with that also. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I said, I said if it's in our budget, we can do that. I agree with that.
So, so, uh-
That I'll agree to.
The motion on the floor was stated, reference to draft similar language as it relates to the Charlotte, with the exception of the modifications he made. It's also noted, for the record, the things that he supported in the event that, that there's, there's budget available, or when we gets the budget time, those sound like some magnificent ideas, including the, the young man or woman that'll be up here running, running the meetings, so. All right, council, we've had discussion, let's look to, uh, all right, let's, okay, I see you down there. Councilmember Hare in green.
Thank you, Mayor, and good motion, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good motion. The conditions, that was one of the reasons that I had pushed my button, was to add some of those very same conditions. But one thing that was thought about, that was stated tonight that we didn't bring up, and give me your thoughts, since you were the maker of the motion, do we look at this as a pilot program for a certain period of time, or, or, or no?
Thank you, colleague Hare. And Councilwoman Green, I thought that was a great idea that she brought up. I think we can do a one-year pilot.
Then I'm, I'm ready to go. Yeah, among those other conditions that were-
With measurables, so that you can see if they're back or not.
Yeah. And see what's being used and what's not being used. Most definitely, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green, for that. That was a great idea.
So I, I, I would love to support that as we move forward, and as we did with other programs that we do, we'll see what works, what, what shakes out, and how we can improve and move forward. But one thing we must continue to stress, it takes all of us, the rules and regulations will not do, it's going to take all of us. I'm ready to vote, Mayor.
All right. Let me get to Councilmember Green, she had something.
I just had one clarification, Councilmember Thompson. You were changing the timeframe to 11?
Yes.
It's kind of split all down in here by age group.
Right. And I'm glad you mentioned that, I forgot, because 16 is not, 16 is not on there. Can we add 16 to idle?
16 is actually over a little bit later, I thought, but you might be right.
Was it 15?
Right. I got you. Yes, it's 11:00 p.m.
So 11:00 p.m. all the way across. Okay, thank you.
All right. Counsel, just to repeat, as we get ready, prepare to vote, there's a motion by Councilmember Thompson utilizing the Charlotte Youth Protection language, with the exceptions of the modifications that have been made on the record-
We're changing the name, Mr. Mayor. Changing the time- City Youth Protection Ordinance.
Right. Which was, changing the name to, as stated, expanding the time to 11, and, and then, in addition to, uh-
Going for daycare.
Some of the incentives that were talked about-
Daycare, childcare, same thing.
As the budget discussion comes about, in terms of the junior mayor, and the recreation extended hours, and transportation options are, are all separate in and of itself, but the motion of the core of it-
And the ID card when you go into the rec centers.
Yeah. And so some of those policy changes will be more of a budgetary, but, but the motion is to, is to, to adopt similar language to the Charlotte ordinance, as stated, with the, with those exceptions. So council, we've had it, let's call for the question. Yeah, for one year, yeah. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, what you want is, I'm, I'm okay with either, you need an actionable time so that we're not here again.
No, I fully understand that. I fully understand that. I, I could, I, I think six months might be a better, because it's during the summer, and I would really like us to get moving on it, because these kids are going to be out of school, so, so maybe just do it for six months.
Right now, the motion was, motion is seconded for a year, that would take an amendment. Is there amendment to that?
No, sir.
Got, and we can always, we can always lift-
Yeah. Right. Right.
Yeah, right. That's right.
I'll, I'll keep my motion the same, Mr. Mayor. Exactly. Yeah. Exactly. Exactly.
All right, council, I'll look, all right, look to you for, for your votes. All right, we're voting. Councilmember Banks? All right. All right. Motion carries eight to two. Those voting in opposition are Councilmember Hondros and Benavente. All right. Motion to adjourn now.